Public hearings are being conducted virtually by electronic means through WebEx Webinar, an online digital platform, and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx Webinar, which is moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. Committee of adjustments staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Members of the public and applicants are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas, the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Hadnaachoni, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustments of the City of Toronto is called to order. The committee considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new jobs. Receiving a copy of a decision of the committee. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure you include your name, address, and email address because the Committee of Adjustments and the Toronto Local Appeal Body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government recently amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. As of November 28, 2022, only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. The hearing procedure. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Making your submissions. When an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first, will make presentation to the committee on the application. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Are there any declarations of interest of panel or staff for the items in the afternoon time slots? Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any requests for deferrals?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have one for the 2:00 PM time slot. It's item 22, 212 Waverley Road. And then at 3:30 or shortly after, there's item number 39, which is 236 Queensdale Avenue. And I don't see any applications to be closed this afternoon.
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is Will, the presenter. Would you like me to read the materials list as we call the agenda items, or did you require any technical assistance?
No, I believe I can read the materials list. I got in the habit, so I just keep it up. Oh, okay, just a minute. I have to go to the next set of... Okay. All right, the first item, number 20, 57 Barker Avenue. The purpose of this application is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with an integral garage, a front porch, and bay windowway, rear ground floor deck and basement, walkout and second-story front and rear balconies. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. We have email correspondence from planning, a report from urban forestry, and opposition from 55 Barker Avenue. Ms. Evangelista?
Oh, sorry, I was just talking to myself. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair members. Ida Evangelista, 53 Bentworth Avenue, Toronto.
Okay, can we have your presentation? There is some opposition.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So what we are proposing at Barker is, in addition, alteration to the existing dwelling. We are keeping the west wall and a portion of the south wall. However, as this, we are removing more than 50% of the walls. It's considered a new home. But the west wall is structurally sound, as is a good portion of the south wall. The current, the house, if you, if you refer to my presentation materials, you'll see in this particular situation, the garage in front of the house. So what we will be doing is we will be aligning the front wall with the, where in, more or less, is the garage, front wall of the garage. We did work with planning. We did bring the house down because, as you will see, there is reinvestment that's starting in the neighborhood. And the height that we are proposing is consistent as 60-floor Barker, Gleed Mount, and main walls of homes on Gleed Mount. So the variances that we're proposing, that's just to give you a little quick synopsis. We are asking, and as I mentioned, we are aligning with the south wall. And that brings us to, we are asking for an additional length of .80. And the balconies that we have on the main floor of 6.23, that's our deck that is off the main floor. And we do have a smaller balcony on the second floor of 5.48. Now, I did have conversation with Mr. Levy, who owns 59 Barker. And we talked about, one of his concerns was the fencing between the two homes, which we did talk through his concerns, and we have come up with an agreement. There's going to be no fence between the two homes. And the fencing will start at the, at the rear of the property. Not respectful opinion. I would like to state that what we are proposing, we do have eight variances. They are minimal, and we are just trying to work with the structure as it is. The wall on the east side, we are increasing it. A good, a portion of the wall is currently, front of the house is .26. Because the west wall is built on somewhat of an angle, we are also keeping the east wall on somewhat of an angle, just to line up with the west. So at the front northeast, we have a setback of .64, and north, or sorry, southeast, we have a setback of .91. I am open to any questions that you may have regarding this property.
Chair, point of clarification?
Oh, sorry.
You've seen, Ida, you've seen the planning condition? Have you?
I saw the, I saw the email from planning stating that the new dwelling will have a height of 8.90.
Right.
Is that what you're referring to, through you, Mr. Chair? Yes. And through you, Mr. Chair, member kid, the plans that you have in front of you should reflect the new height. And including my submission also should reflect the new height.
So I'm just looking at the variances then. So number three changes, but there's others that are... Number four, doesn't it have to change as well? Number eight? I mean, aren't they the same variance? Don't they all get reduced down to your 8.9?
Through you, Mr. Chair, member kid, yes. Variances three, four, and nine, while I'll now read, 8.9 meters. I should have started with that, my apologies.
No worries. I just, because the planning memo only referred to variance number three.
Right.
And it's variance number eight, not number nine, I believe.
Eight, yes.
Ms. Evangelista, you said you're going to remove a fence between your property and the neighbors. Does that affect any of the variances?
No, Mr. Chair. This is just an agreement that, and I'm not sure if Mr. Levy is one of the registrants, but this is just a conversation. I'm just reiterating a conversation with the neighbor. It doesn't affect any of the variances.
And you haven't filed revised plans either?
You do have the revised plans, Mr. Chair.
But do the revised plans show that the fence is eliminated?
There is no fence that, that was shown on the site plan.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, let's move on to Mr. Levy and Ms. Weldon.
Chris Levy, you've been unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
If you speak up, we can hear you, yes.
Okay, great. No, I heard everything that was said, and I'm in agreeance with it. I have no complaints.
All right, sir. Could we just have your name and your address for the record?
Chris Levy, 59 Barker Avenue.
Okay, so you have no further comments? You're content with everything Ms. Evangelista said?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Zoran Petrokovic.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Zoran and Amy seem to be having a lot of trouble connecting. I'm trying to get them in at the moment. I may have Amy on the line, but Zoran, we're still trying to connect.
Okay, let's deal with Amy if we can.
Bye.
Hello?
I believe we hit the answering machine.
Oh, I see. Okay, so...
Through you, Mr. Chair. John, try one more time, and if we're unable to contact, then we'll have to move on.
Mr. Petrokovic has told us he's probably, is going to be traveling, not going to be here. So let's try Amy Rumbold.
Zoran, you've been unmuted.
Oh, he's here?
Yeah. Hi, 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 yeah. I'm just like out of Canada. As I was explaining, really bad, I'm trying for the last 20 minutes to get connected, but...
Okay, can we just have, can we just have? Mr. Petrokovic, can we just have your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Z O R N. First name, last name, P E T K O V I C.
Okay, could you just speak up a little bit and tell us what your concerns are?
Yeah, well, basically, my concern is about size of the house and the deepness and like, I've been, like, I explained in the email. I hope somebody received the email, but I was sending, that's like, the property, what the person trying to make it, it's blocking completely my privacy in any way, like height, like size. And in addition, like, the person trying to make in the front and on the back balcony, which is not acceptable, basically, I'm losing completely my privacy. So I'm trying like to set up, like, everybody have, like, to have our own privacy, but in this case, I'm gonna be definitely losing my privacy.
Okay.
I send that in, I send my explanation, the email, I'm expecting to be that, you know, accepted, my, yeah, opinion. Yeah, go ahead.
We have your email. We note your concerns. Thank you very much. Okay, Amy Rumbold?
I mean, you know what, I don't, I, you know what, I really don't care, like, I mean, don't mind, like, the people, like, upgrade their property, but like, in this case, you know, I'm completely blocked from that. And, and each way, like a sun way, like, you know, blocking the, like, my privacy and, like, all kind of things. So basically, you know, someone has to, you know, keep that in mind, like, regarding that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Petrokovic. Petrokovic, can we move on to Amy Rumbold?
We weren't able to connect to Amy. I can try a final time, but I...
Try once more.
Sorry, but there's no more room to record messages.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Keep talking to myself. I, I did hear, so Mr. Levy, he's quite content, he's content, and he has no comments. Mr. Petrokovic, I know he was, he's concerned about the privacy. We have the deck on the main floor, and we have a smaller balcony on the second floor opposite to, to his home. What we can do to, you know, just to secure, because I noticed he does have quite a large deck in the backyard. So what we can do is we can create a, I really don't want to say opaque glass, but we can put up some privacy screening, like vegetation privacy screening on both sides, which will, you know, create privacy for, for neighbors on both sides, including Mr. Levy. That is one way of getting around it. As I mentioned, so we are adding a second floor. Mr. Petrokovic, he is on the west side, so he will be receiving sun from southeast to west. So with the new height that we are proposing, and we have brought it down, I respectfully submit that it should not, with the, and along with the privacy screens, it should not impede on his property too much with the situation of the homes. But we are more than happy to, to put the privacy screens on if that helps him while he is sitting on his deck in the backyard.
Okay, any questions now? Okay, so we'll go into committee now. And have any comments, or do we have a motion? Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that with the changes that are suggested by planning and the proposed screening, this is a, is an acceptable application. It is an extension at the back, but it's not that large. The variances are not unreasonable. And again, subject to the mitigating effects of the screening, I think it's, it's quite a, quite a reasonable application. So I would like to move approval of the amended application, which is the changes that we referred to earlier, subject to forestry conditions number two and three, and the provision of 1.5 high opaque screening on the east and west sides of the second floor rear balcony and the main floor deck.
Right, and I have a planning report with a planning condition.
Is that an addition to the changes? Sorry, I missed that.
Well, probably not. Probably is, I just have a note, I don't know what it is, but it's probably...
Just a second, I'll just look it up.
8.9, I think.
Yeah, we, we already put that in.
Okay.
There's three variances though, right?
Yeah.
So we should name the three variances?
Paragraph three.
That's here, the variance number three should be changed to 8.9 meters, which I believe has been already incorporated into the three variances that Larry's just mentioned, which were...
Through you, Mr. Chair, variance number three, variance number four, and variance number eight will now read 8.9 meters.
And they're all reflected on the revised drawings too. So, so that's why I said the amended application, the revised application, would incorporate that.
Okay, we have a seconder. Aaron, okay, all in favor? Have your approval, thank you. Number 21, 250 Glen Manor Drive West. Purpose of this application, to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a second-story front balcony and a rear deck with a basement walkout. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, email correspondence from planning, engineering, and a staff report from transportation, correspondence in support from 248 Glen Manor, 112B Swanwick Avenue, nine form letters in support from occupants on Glen Manor, east and west, 114 Pine Glen Road, and William, and other addresses on Williamson Road, correspondence and interest from 171 Hammersmith Avenue and 248 Glen Manor Drive West, opposition from 172 Hammersmith, 242 Glen Manor West, 178 Hammersmith, 246 Glen Manor Drive West, and 160 Hammersmith Avenue. Christopher Xavier?
Yep.
Yeah, can we have your name and address for the record?
Okay, my name is Chris Xavier. I am the applicant on behalf of the clients, and my address is 116 Bowie Avenue.
Okay, can we have your presentation, because there's some opposition?
Sure. So, good member, sorry, good afternoon, members of the committee. We are proposing to construct a new detached dwelling. The proposal will create a more functional and efficient space for the homeowner's growing family. We were tasked with designing a home that not only maintained the, the general footprint of the home, but also maintained much of the landscaping and was produced with materials with selected longevity and efficiency in mind. Originally planned as an addition, we had to change our application to a new build during the zoning stage. With the house and such, let's say, structural disrepair, with many of the walls not structurally sound, once we had the plan for new windows and new walls, it was deemed too close to the 50% to viably proceed, so we decided to switch, to pivot a bit and go into the new build route. But it is very much maintaining the same characteristics as the addition, in the sense that it's in the same location as if it were a top-up addition. You know, with that pivot, we propose some, you know, some minor triggers to the variances. The majority of these variances were already triggered with the existing house, and any additional variances, we believe are minor in nature and fall within the characteristics of the Planning Act. To outline some of these variances, I'll start with variance one and two, so the deck and building length, deck setback and building length. These are a result of the walkout and small storage under the deck. You know, if we were to remove these items, it would have very little impact on the overall design of the, of the proposal. As avid gardeners, the clients did want to maintain a lot of the landscaping, and that was a key focus in a lot of the planning for the design of the home. So the gardening shed is basically utilizing some of the space underneath the existing deck, or the proposed deck to, for some of that gardening. And then the walkout, you know, the unique characteristics of the lot, there's a very drastic slope in two directions. So the back of the lot is very much almost flush to the ground floor. So in order to get some viable lighting into that basement, the, the walkout access, both an access route, but also a twofold as a, a large window well to allow for some natural lighting into that basement. That basically covers the, the first two variances. The third variance is for the FSI. We believe the current requirement for the 0.35 isn't as realistic as it may seem for the homes in the neighborhood. For reference, the existing home, which is, which I would consider a one-and-a-half-story home, is already at the FSI of 0.5. The, the second story is extremely poorly laid out and within the attic space, and it's, it's, it's a barely functional second story for a growing family. So it's clear to us that this home and many of the other homes in the area don't meet the requirement, as many of the similar-sized lots in the area have similarly-sized homes as what we were proposing. If we were to look at some of the other lots in, on lower portions of the grading, again, because we are at a uniquely sloped lot, they have the same size with the ground floors much further above grade. So it could be argued that they are much taller and bigger than our homes, since ours is majority, the majority of our building is buried. the majority of our building is buried, uh, with regards to the basement. Um, this is clear also in some of the applications that are being put forth. Uh, so if we look at some of the applications, um, your, I, I have my presentation. I don't know if we can go to that on the second page there. Two, I believe. Yeah. So I have there some outlined, uh, you know, 271 Glen Manor Drive. It's requesting 0.84 times, but it's good to note that, uh, that equates to 392 square meters. Uh, and you can see that, you know, that the following applications are, you know, 0.65 times, 0.94, 0.48, 0, 1.09, uh, for 186 Kennelworth, which was approved, um, all have similar square meterage, uh, and have been approved with, uh, uh, a well above 0.35, um, um, FSI requirement. Uh, so I think it's clear to see that like the FSI number can be quite different on, from lot to lot and the, but the overall size of the homes are in the upper range of the mid, the mid 300s to, uh, upper 300s. With regards to the density of the proposed in comparison to the lot, you know, it's arguable that the, on a corner lot, there's much more actual lot than is presented, uh, through a survey. You know, we don't have as much legal, uh, uh, lottage, but, uh, in, in terms of appearance and how it, it, it is prospectively against the lot, it, it, it's fairly sized with comparison to how much landscaping there is. Uh, and I think it, it represents a, a, a visual continuity with the rest of, uh, the, the homes in the community. With regards to variance number four, so with the setback, again, this, uh, uh, this was originally planned as an addition. Um, so we are maintaining the existing setbacks, um, the, uh, side yard setbacks. So with that said, um, you know, we don't, we think that's in character with the neighborhood. Um, many of the homes have similar setbacks to their side yards. Um, we were, the, the main goal here was to have minimal impact on the, uh, landscape of, of, of the lot, which is again, very unique, uh, many large old trees. Uh, we did not want to, uh, further excavate any areas unnecessarily.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Xavier has reached his five minutes.
Okay. We'll wrap it up very quickly. With regards to the existing parking, uh, location, uh, this can be a bit of a, uh, this was mentioned on some of the opposition letters as well. Uh, it can be quite confusing because, uh, we are not changing the existing parking condition on the lot. Um, while there is, uh, a garage shown on the lot, it is not a functional garage. Um, the functional garage, the functional parking space is the existing, um, driveway, which is in the side yard and we are proposing to maintain that. We are not proposing street parking. We are proposing off-street parking on the existing driveway. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that as well for also the, uh, neighbors, which we have done, uh, in person as well. We have come, uh, applied as well for most of the building height. So the sixth variance has to do with the old bylaw, which is still in place. Uh, we do meet the new requirement, uh, with, with regards to height, um, um, and the current bylaw. Uh, again, this plays to the very unique slope on the lot. Um, all three corners of the home comply to the 10 meter, but because one corner is on at a severe slope, uh, right at the front, uh, that is the side that triggered the point, uh, 31 meters, um, uh, higher than the, the previous bylaw required. Um, I'd also like to note before I get off that most of the immediate neighbors, uh, we do have a map in my presentation that shows it, um, are in support of the application. We did have some, uh, neighbors, uh, with some concerns. We tried to address, uh, all of them and our clients have reached out to all, uh, the neighbors who submitted concerns to try to clarify any items. Um, if you would like to hear more on, uh, those items, I would, you know, if I was allotted more time, I will. If you have any questions, I'd be, uh, glad to answer them.
Any questions panel? Yes, Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, when you had your zoning review done, um, I presume that the site plan that we had before us is the one that was submitted. Was there any question about you needing a variance for front yard parking? You, you mentioned that the existing driveway is going to be used for parking. So that presumably is a form of front yard parking and I'm just wondering if that was flagged at all.
No. So technically it's side yard. Um, uh, by zoning standards, the shortest, uh, lot line that faces the street is front yard. Uh, so the existing is in the side yard and that's, uh, what was being maintained, proposed to be maintained. And to my knowledge, there are no variances triggered by that.
All right. Thank you.
Only variance was triggered by not a non-private driveway, a non-private garage, uh, parking.
Thank you. Uh, Sean Curran.
Sean, you've been unmuted.
Hello?
Yes. Can we have your name and address, sir?
Thank you. My name is Sean Curran. I live at 246 Glen Manor Drive West.
But so let us have your concerns, sir.
Thank you. Uh, my concerns, well, so I'm, uh, south, two doors south of this building and so directly at our kitchen window, we'll see the added story. And so that's going to take away, uh, a significant amount of light. Now I just want to be clear, we're very, very fond of Gavin and Mort, it's the owners and, and we agree that, uh, they and their agent have been extremely forthcoming, uh, with their communications and expect explanations. Um, there's no issues with their transparency and we appreciate that. It just seems like the building is very, very tall, uh, compared to what is there. And I'll remind everybody that the setback to 248 is extremely tight and it has been since I think these houses were originally constructed. It's less than a meter. That's from wall to wall. If you throw in the roof line and the gutter, there's only a few centimeters between those, uh, those homes. And so adding a story to that home, whatever comes off the roof is now going to fall a lot farther to get onto our neighbor's roof. I know she's expressed, uh, both support and concerns, uh, and I think, I know relative to the application, it'll be whatever that decision is, but I think what's most concerning is what the construction process is going to look like. Whether our neighbor is going to have sufficient assurance that her foundation is protected, that her grade is protected, that her roof.
Mr. 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 Curran, uh, we, we only deal with variations from bylaws. We don't deal with construction issues.
Okay. Uh, well then beyond the, the, uh, the height, um, I'm glad the driveway has been clarified because that was a little confusing. Uh, that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Craig Race.
Craig, you've been unmuted.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh, Craig Race. I live at 12 Swanwick Avenue, a few blocks north of the property. Um, 250 Glen Manor is situated, uh, to begin, I'd like to say I'm speaking very enthusiastically in support of this application. 250 Glen Manor is situated across from the Glen Stewart Ravine, a park and the Glen Manor Bridge. It's the first house and the focal point for anyone coming across the bridge from east to west. The homes surrounding the ravine are century homes with great character and beauty. The area is something of an oasis. All of the homes along Glen Manor, from Queen Street to Kingston Road and all the homes along, uh, Williamson Road fit with the, the streetscape, except for 250 Glen Manor. The white stucco finish of this house is really not fitting with the neighborhood, nor the climate demands here in Canada. That is beginning to show as the house appears a little rundown. I'm thrilled to see a family invest in revitalizing the site and this is exactly what this prominent corner needs. It's going to improve my family's enjoyment of the ravine and the streetscape. Uh, the variances are all very much in keeping with the neighborhood. I actually checked this and I noticed in a few letters submitted that, uh, there are some opposition to the FSI. Every one of those letters has an FSI well over the bylaw requirement, or they have an unusually large property. I find this to be a little hypocritical. We beach residents wish we could all have properties where FSI was not a factor. But unfortunately, not all lots are created equal in our community. In fact, basically all houses in the area are well over the bylaw requirements in many ways, which is a good thing. We're a walkable urban community with a variety of lot sizes and our neighborhood pattern was established in a way that protects our ravines and natural features, which is far more important than the prescribing to bylaws. It did not reflect the importance of our unique natural setting. Sensible density is one of the virtues of the beach that allow us to be close to workshops and nature. And really this proposal is not even that dense. These bylaws were created by people who rode horses to work and didn't put insulation in their walls. Um, I'll conclude by saying that I understand the change can be difficult, but it's really wonderful to see continued investment in our community, especially by a young family hoping to continue establishing the roots in our neighborhood. And welcoming that investment and embracing progressive improvement like this is critical to our continued prosperity. Uh, thank you very much for your time today, committee members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Xavier.
Can you hear me? Yep.
Yes.
Okay. I can, I'm, I'm the presenter or I'm the applicant. So.
Yeah. So, uh, I, I wanted you to speak to, uh, what Mr. Curran said. If you have anything you want to add.
Yes. So if you can actually quickly go through the, um, my presentation file. Um, if you scroll down to say the third page, um, I just want to highlight a graph, uh, one more page. Sorry, one more. Uh, you could see there the outline of the existing home compared, uh, to the, uh, proposed. Uh, in yellow is the proposed and, um, the red is the existing. You'll see that the back and front walls are actually pushed in from the existing. And if you go to the next page, I have a few illustrations here of the, so in purple, you'll see, um, that is the area above 1.4 meters. So four and a half feet. Uh, if you look at actual, like the actual six foot height mark, it's about half of that in both those front two rooms. So it is very much a third story inside of an attic. So I would consider it more two and a half story. Um, um, if by that characteristics, the next two images, um, if you look here, so just to illustrate the unique, uh, slope of the lot. And also, um, I, I understand the neighbor's concerns and I, and I, I really want to make sure that it's not, um, that I'm not putting words into anyone's mouth, but the, the overall slope of the lot and the way that the, the, the drawings look can be misleading because it's such a skinny home. So it can make it look a lot taller than it actually is. So I wanted to show this illustration where you can see the existing outline on the right there, uh, of the home with the proposed. And you'll see that, uh, our eaves, um, we no longer have overhang. So there's no concern with regards to, uh, overshadowing the neighbor or encroaching further into the neighbor. We're actually encroaching less into that, uh, that side yard with our direct neighbor. Uh, and in terms of height, we're very much on par with, um, um, hi, um, his home, um, the one, um, with regards to, uh, Eve's height. And by maintaining a sloped roof, which was originally our, 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 our goal here is to maintain the general characteristics of a home in the neighborhood. We did not want to do a three, a third story flat roof. We wanted to keep slopes. We wanted to make sure that the, the wall heights, uh, I'll note that we don't have a wall height variance. We want to make sure that the wall heights were all in general keeping with, uh, other homes in the neighborhood. So you'll see here that the, the height is very much on par and we are situated much higher. If we were to place our home on, uh, any of the lots, a few stories down, it would actually be slightly shorter, if not the same in height. Um, I also have an image that I submitted. It should be part of the late package, uh, 21E dash, or 21E1, I believe. Okay. So you can see here, we've kind of superimposed our rendering to show the differences in height. Um, and you'll see that, you know, um, there, there is already on that street, a home that would be substantially taller than ours. Um, so four stories down is much taller. Um, three stories down is basically on par. Um, and there is a, an existing two and a half or three story home on the, on the, on the street.
Okay. Panel, do you have any questions? Okay. Go into committee. Do we have a motion? Carl? You're muted, Carl.
Sorry. I'm, I'm very familiar with this site and this area. It has remarkable natural features. It faces a ravine. Um, and there is a huge obligation to keep, uh, a building here that, uh, fits into the community and has some links physically with the existing buildings. Um, I, contrary to a lot of the letters that came in that were criticizing the character of the building, I, I frankly feel that the architect in this case is to be commended for, um, using a vocabulary that reflects back to that historical character. Um, the pitched roof, uh, thank goodness it's not a flat roof and the way in which the walls are treated, I think is consistent with the area. I think that the proposal fits in well. The, the applicant has indicated a desire and a willingness to retain as much of the existing planting as possible and to try, uh, to the extent possible to use portions of the existing building, all of which I think is, um, is commendable. I would like to move approval of the application and I don't believe that in anything that I found, there were anything else that in terms of conditions to attach unless my colleagues, um, wish to add something, but I think this is a really good proposal and I'm glad to see it before us.
So I have a note of a transportation con- condition, Carl. I don't know, may not actually be a condition, but there was something from transportation.
They talked about restoring the obsolete driveway and curb cut, but that's why I asked the question. The driveway is actually being used for parking. And I gather the applicant indicated that, that that was, that that was discussed at the time of the, of the, um, of the zoning review. So, um, I, I, I actually don't know that the transportation condition makes sense, but that's, that's my view. I think the idea to retain the existing, um, driveway makes, makes a great deal of sense. So I'm, I guess I'm in the hands of my colleagues as to whether or not that condition gets attached. If it does, then in fact, we're not approving the application as it was submitted.
Uh, maybe we could ask the applicant.
Yeah. Mr. Xavier.
Hello?
Yes.
So we actually do have, um, a, a permit in review right now for off-street parking. Um, I don't know if that plays to this at all. Um, again, the proposal was never, it's always in the drawings. It's very clear that we are maintaining the existing, um, um, variances. Uh, sorry, the existing driveway. And, um, uh, with regards to permitting with transportation, we do have it, uh, uh, an application in place for the permitting that, that parking space.
But that has nothing to do with these variances.
Right.
Is that correct? Okay. All right. So you're correct, Carl. I don't think, I mean, so long as they're maintaining the driveway, uh, there's no need for the condition.
Um, Chair, just a que, is it, is it perhaps not a legal parking pad? And that's why they need the variance and the permit?
I think the, sorry, just to intervene there, the planning does say that we, um, that they recommend that we apply for said parking permit, which we have done. So I don't know if that's more so a condition or.
They had indicated to us that they were fine with the application. I, the reason I asked the question about the driveway was because transportation had basically told you to remove it. Um, and you indicated, I gather, that, that the driveway has always been there. It's been in all of your drawings. I, and there hasn't been any discussion about removing the driveway. I'm,
I think it's.
My assumption was therefore that the transportation condition needn't apply because you'd already raised it and we're in the process of getting it approved as a parking space. Um.
Incorrect. I, I, I believe, I don't have it, you know, word for word, but I believe it was, uh, removed if we had not applied to keep the parking. I think that was under the assumption that it was being removed. So considering that the, it's not being removed, I think it no longer applies.
Okay.
It was a very, I think it was much of an either or situation.
All right. Let us proceed without condition.
Mr. Chairman, it says, just, just to, to further elaborate, it says that the site plan proposes, uh, oh, sorry. This is reflective of a zero parking variance as such. Well, in fact, it is not, they are providing parking. So, um, what I would suggest is, is, is I still think you should talk to transportation, but from my reading of it, I, I don't know that we need the condition. My colleagues may not agree.
Well, actually, uh, variance number five says no parking spaces will be provided on site. Uh, I, I think maybe leave the condition in, Carl. I think, and, and, and Mr. Xavier will have to sort of. And Mr. Xavier will have to sort it out with transportation. They may not consider that, I don't know.
I agree, because there are things that we are not 100% sure about, the curb cut and everything else together.
So leaving it in isn't going to hurt, though, we could take it out later, okay. I'm fine with that.
Should the committee approve the application? It had, you know, plant, transportation anticipate that we could approve it, but they just want that condition that they apply, so I think we should leave it.
Okay, fine with me.
All right, so do we have a seconder? Aaron? Okay, all in favor? Have your approval, sir, thank you. Number twenty-two, two-twelve Waverly Road. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a two-story south-side addition, a third-story addition with a deck, a front porch extension, new rear deck, stairs, a reverse slope driveway with a front yard parking pad, and to install a secondary suite within the basement. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. Staff reports from Transportation Services, Urban Forestry, and Planning. Correspondence and support from two-nineteen Waverly Road. Correspondence and concern from one-ninety-six Waverly, and opposition from no address provided. Deborah Messer?
Yes, I'm here, I'm actually asking for a deferral today.
Okay, can you tell us why?
Yes, I got two reasons, the first is that the mailout, the neighborhood mailout was sent out, I guess, a bit late. It was technically sent on the tenth, you know, the ten days ahead of the hearing, but no one received it, myself included, until the eighteenth, which meant that neighbors had less than, you know, eight hours to reply or to comment on anything, which they still did. So there was just really inadequate time to address some of their concerns, and did have concerns that we might be able to address. And the second reason is that there was a discrepancy or an omission in the community planning report that didn't reflect the concessions that we had made and not the chance to kind of prove that or to change the drawings for that, so that's the other reason.
Okay, thank you. Chris Gray and Lindsey Langford?
Lindsey, you've been unmuted.
Do we have anybody?
Lindsey Langford and Chris Gray, you've been unmuted.
Are they there?
It shows that they're in the WebEx, but I'm not sure if they're present.
Okay. Possible to phone them or whatever?
Yeah, I'll give them a call.
Hi, this is Chris Gray from two-zero-eight Waverly Road.
Okay, can we have your concerns, sir?
Our concern is with respect to the south-side setback.
Oh, pardon me, pardon me, sir.
Requesting deferral.
We're just discussing a deferral, the applicant has requested a deferral because the notices didn't get out early enough and there's some discrepancy in the materials. So they want to correct that.
We have no issue with the deferral.
Okay, thank you very much. Panel, do we have a motion for a deferral? Yes, Larry?
Yes, sir, I'm happy to move deferral, Chair.
Okay, seconder, Carl, all in favor? Have your approval for a deferral, thank you. Number twenty-three, six-twenty-five St. Clarence Avenue. Purpose of this application to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition and basement walkouts at the front and rear of the dwelling to accommodate one secondary suite within the basement. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. Mr. Kim?
Hi, my name is Rock Kim.
Yes, your address, sir?
Three-eight-six Young Street, I'm the agent of the owner.
Okay, could we have a brief presentation because there is some opposition?
Okay, actually, we are trying to make the rear side addition and the basement apartment, but the addition part, there is no issue for the zoning, but the basement apartment, we have to make the front walkout stair because the rear walkout stair is not fire department access because of no side yard setback. So we need a front yard setback for the basement apartment and then the owner was talking to the neighbor and then they're okay. There, on the street, it's not the first house, they have the front walkout stair, there's like nine more houses on the street. So this is very common on this, the front walkout stair.
Okay. Thank you, let me just go to Paul and Frank Iraqi.
Mr. Chairman, could the applicant confirm whether or not the front balcony is an existing balcony or whether it's part of the application?
Okay, Mr. Kim?
The balcony is part of the new addition, yes.
Do we have Paul and Frank Iraqi?
Iraqi, yes, this is Paul speaking.
Okay, we can't hear you, sir, you're very faint.
This is Paul Iraqi speaking.
Okay, can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Paul Iraqi, six-twenty-three St. Clarence Avenue.
Okay, what are your concerns, sir?
My concern is more regarding the extension in the back. How can I say, the, there is another house in the rear which belongs to the same property and extending the front house, there's no backyard, open space, it's almost, everything's going to be built upon this property. And it's not, how can I say, it's a residential neighborhood, it's not a commercial neighborhood. I, also, I have a deck out my back and I'm going to be looking at a brick wall, which I'm not too happy with. Isn't there supposed to be a four-foot setback or something like that when you build?
Well...
From the property line?
Well, we'll ask Mr. Kim. He'll respond, do you have anything more to say? Any further questions?
It's very frustrating to...
Honestly, I thought the owner already talked to the neighbor of two-six-two-three.
I am the neighbor of six-two-three.
Yes.
All right, so just a minute, just a minute. Mr. Iraqi, have you finished your presentation?
I'm sorry, my presentation, are you talking about?
All right, Mr. Kim, would you just hold on, I need one person to speak at a time. Mr. Iraqi, are you finished with what you have to say?
I believe so for now.
Okay, well...
Worried about the variance at the back. His plan's showing his wall is going up a foot now, 1.2 foot and 14 inches basically from the property line.
Okay, well, there's, all right, all right, let, Mr. Kim? Can you address those issues? I don't see, I don't see a variance with respect to the side yard setback. Except for the stairs. The walkout. Mr. Kim?
I'm sorry about that, yeah, I was just talking to the owners, then he was talking to the neighbor and then they didn't mention about that thing. But...
Well, but the only variances, the only variances we have are with respect to walkout, so everything else should be as of right, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right, for the backside walkout stair is the issue, the addition by itself is not part of the because it's a semi-detached house.
Yeah.
Chair, just a quick question?
Yes.
Just looking at the site plan, so you've got an existing laneway suite in your rear?
Yeah, that's existing, yes.
And your neighbor at twenty-three also has an existing laneway suite?
Yeah, same, it looks same house, yeah, same size, yeah.
And you, so your, your site plan shows 346 square feet of landscaping back there, that's the area between your proposed walkout and deck and the laneway suite?
That's the landscaped area total, yes, between the houses, house, yes.
That's your soft landscaping?
Yeah. Actually, 345 is a total landscape with the deck, wood deck and the walkout stair.
Oh, but you don't, you don't, you don't need a variance for rear yard landscaping?
No, not really, yeah, no.
Can you clarify, you just confused me. You said that's the landscaped area including the deck and the walkout stair. Can, to, further to Larry's point, can we pull up the site plan on the screen? What is the three, four, five point nine square feet of landscaping, is it just?
This total?
What's left over between the laneway suite and the bottom of those stairs?
Yes, that's right.
But then you, and you don't have any paving or walkways or anything that are stretching between the stairs? And how did you get into the laneway suite? Do you have to walk across the grass area?
Yeah, grass, there is a grass between there. We actually doesn't really use that space for the grass only, the laneway suite goes to the back, the backside, they're using it. So honestly, there is no hard landscape or like a walkway. Between there.
Okay. All right, any further questions, panel? Did we lose Aaron? Aaron, there you are.
I'm busy, yeah.
Okay, do we have any questions? Okay, do we have any comments or a motion? Yes, Larry?
Thanks, Chair, this is, I think this is, you know, two very small, minor variances, I think it's quite reasonable. It looks like there's a fair amount of development on this lot and the adjoining semi as well. And I agree with the applicant, there are a lot of front basement walkouts along St. Clarence and in the area, so I don't think it is out of character inconsistent with the pattern of this area. So I, I think it's a supportable application, very minor variances, I move approval, no conditions.
Okay, do we have a seconder? Aaron, all in favor? Have your approval, thank you. Number twenty-four, forty-four Gwin Avenue. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story townhouse dwelling by constructing a new two-story rear addition. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, we have a thirteen-form letter in support from properties on Gwin and Melbourne. And also, it looks like there's a separate letter in support from Gwin Avenue. Franco Spagnolo?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
My name is Franco Spagnolo from Studio Spagnolo Inc. and I'm the owner's representative today.
Okay, Mr. Spagnolo, I don't think we need a presentation, no opposition. Is there anything you want to say before we, to the panel, before we go into committee?
Just a couple of quick points, the owners live in the dwelling since 2003 and loves the neighborhood. The existing two-story and one-story portion at the rear are in poor structural condition, the foundation needs some major repairs, so that's going to be reconstructed, some minor extension at the rear. We've talked to the immediate neighbors on the north and south and we've talked to them in detail and we believe we provided a respectable design solution. The front of the house has, will not be changed, it'll maintain the character of the existing old townhouse block. So if you have any questions, I'll be here to answer.
Okay, Aaron?
Hi, hello, this is a very quick question about the previous decision that was many years ago in 2003.
Yes.
Is it related to any variances of what you want to build today?
No, I believe someone else tried to build a deck on the second floor. The rear yard setback is actually, that was proposed back then, was less, I believe.
Right.
And even the building depth. The building depth in this case, once reconstructed, will not be increased. Or the existing rear yard setback of 7.2 will not be decreased. So the footprint, other than a little bit on the north side, again, that's going to align with the 0.9, but other than that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions or do we have comments or a motion? Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I think as the applicant indicated, this is a very respectful project. It does retain the existing character on the street. The variances are very minor and there's the support of both adjacent neighbors, so I'd like to move approval without condition.
All right, the seconder? Aaron? Thank you, all in favor? Have your approval, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item number twenty-five, one-twenty, one-twenty-one Durant Avenue. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing one-story front and rear additions, a complete two-story addition, a front porch, a rear ground-level deck, a rear walkout basement, and front and rear second-story balconies. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. We have correspondence and concern from one-nineteen Durant Avenue and opposition from one-twenty-three Durant Avenue. Javed Iqbal?
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Javed Iqbal.
Do we have your address, sir?
Good afternoon, everyone, hello?
Yeah, can we have your address? We heard your name, we need your address.
One-twenty-one Durant Avenue, M-four-J, four-W-three in East Shore, Ontario.
Okay, so there is some opposition, so I think you better give us a presentation, tell us what this is about.
Yeah, Your Honor, so we're requesting a minor variance to add a second floor above our existing bungalow. We have previously requested variance in 2019 and 2021. And the same north-side neighbors, they showed up and opposed the construction. And henceforth, it was rejected. This time, we have made multiple modifications to our building plans, we have reduced the width of the house and we are now within the side yard setbacks. We've also reduced the total height of the house to be within the bi-law limits. And once we've reduced the width of the house, right, to... And once we've reduced the width of the house, right, to comply with the, with the setbacks, we have automatically reduced the FSI and the lot coverage as well. Uh, we've pulled up quite a few comparables from our street and the neighboring streets. Uh, and they've, uh, they have, uh, been approved for around the same FSI and lot coverage limits. So the first one that I would like to address is sixty-four Durant Avenue. Uh, for, so basically for us, we are going, uh, the allowed lot coverage is thirty-five percent and we're requesting a lot coverage of, of forty percent. Uh, so sixty-four Durant Avenue here. Uh, they, they went in for multiple, uh, variances, but they requested a lot coverage of thirty-nine percent. So very similar to ours. And they requested a floor space index of point seven eight times the area, right? Uh, secondly, on our same street, one one seven Durant Avenue, they went in to receive a lot coverage of thirty-five, uh, sorry, forty-two percent. And the floor space index of zero point seven six, uh, times the lot area, and they were approved as well. Uh, this third comparable, one one nine Durant Avenue. Uh, the max, for them, the lot coverage that was approved was forty-seven point two percent. While the, uh, while the floor space index for them that was approved is one point one eight times, which is quite a bit, right, compared to ours. Then we have fifty-two Lankin Boulevard. For them, they requested a lot coverage of forty-three percent and a floor space index of zero point seven three times the lot area, and this was approved as well. After that, we have ninety-six Lankin Boulevard. They requested a lot coverage of forty-one percent and, uh, floor space index of zero point seven five times the lot area. And this was approved as well. Then we have, we pulled up thirty-one Milton Road. This was approved in twenty twenty-two as well. Uh, they requested a floor space index of zero point eight two times the lot area and the lot coverage of fifty percent, and this was approved as well. So, uh, we're here just to request, uh, minor variance. We previously, we were, we were way over the, the building height now, but now we have reduced the building height to be within the bylaw limit and also, uh, the north side neighbor, we've reduced the width to be now within the, the, the bylaw limits, right? Uh, my family, we, uh, my son, he goes to, so currently I'm living in Northshire, uh, North York, upper part of North York, and my son is, uh, studying at UFT St. George Campus. Every day he asks for travel, um, and my, my daughter, she, she got her admission at UFT St. George too for life science, so she, she's starting next year's, uh, and we're requesting. Then you could probably grant us the approval, so we can move in closer to her university. And as for the neighbor on our north side, right? Uh, uh, it's the mu, uh, so the opposition is actually from the daughter. The daughter does not reside in that, that house. The mom resides in that house and the mom is, uh, an elderly lady. She, uh, she, she, actually, she just called me last week requesting some help with her garbage bin, and we've been hel, we've been helping her a lot lately. I mean, we, we pull out her garbage bin, put it at the front. Uh, cur, currently, I, uh, we're, we're, and my tenant there too, I, I rent the basement to, uh, to a tenant, and he's been very helpful to her, to her as well. And we told her if there's any that sector is gonna be there to look at any, any.
Mr. Iqbal, your, your time is up.
Sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
William, you'll get a chance to rebut anything anybody says if necessary. Uh, Mr. Breckles and Joanne LaPointe?
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, um, my issues, as per my written submission, are not
Can we have your, can we have your name and your address first?
Excuse me, yes, sorry. William Breckles, one one nine Durant.
Okay. And your concerns, sir?
My concerns relate to the project itself and not so much the bylaws, and I appreciate from what I've heard earlier that that's not necessarily in scope for your discussion today. Um, so I'll just quickly run through the fact that the house next door is in a terrible state of disrepair and it has not been maintained, nor has it been looked after in terms of, um, garbage. And as a consequence, there is a rodent infestation, which is impacted.
Sir, those are, those matters are not our concern. Do, do you have anything to say with respect to the lot coverage or the floor space index?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Carol Musley?
Carol, you've been unmuted.
In Scarborough, Ontario. Uh, thank you all for letting me speak today. I have written some comments down, but first I would like to address some of the things that were raised by the residents at one twenty-one Durant Avenue.
Can we have, can we have your name and address, uh, uh, first and, and let us know who you're speaking on behalf of?
Sure. So, sorry, my name is Carol Mosley, M O U S L Y. I reside at forty-six Arden Crescent, but I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, Noemi Bommarco, B O M M A R C O, who resides at one twenty-three Durant Avenue. Uh, English is not her first language, so she has asked me to speak on her behalf.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so, I wanted to, I had prepared something to say, but first I wanted to address the comments that have already been made this morning. Um, it's very interesting that the neighbors say that they're very neighborly because that only started the, in this last couple of months, now that he wants to have this done, and yes, he has brought the garbage can in for him.
Ms. Mus, Ms. Musley, those are not matters with which we are concerned.
Then I will address the matters at issue today. Um, so, the reasons that we have with this are specific to the two properties at one twenty-one and one twenty-three Durant Avenue. And the impact the proposed construction will have on the one twenty-three Durant Avenue. The issues being outlined today are not encountered on the other construction projects in my neighborhood. Um, as you know, the owners of one twenty-one Durant Avenue have twice before petitioned the Committee of Adjustments for Approval, and he has twice been denied. At the twenty twenty-one hearing, before denying requests for variances, the committee summarized their findings by saying that the proposed construction would be an overdevelopment of the property, that the project would create a liability for one twenty-three Durant Avenue due to the light being seriously blocked from entering into the property and the building, the context of the building. That is to say, the building would be quite acceptable in another location. Um, so the issue
Yeah, go ahead.
So the heart of the issue is the light that will be blocked from entering into the south-facing kitchen, side door, side windows of the house at one twenty-three Durant Avenue. Although they are no longer requesting a side setback, having a house of that size, of the magnitude, so lot coverage and both, um, increased floor index would would block light from entering into my mother's kitchen. Um, all of the other examples he listed with the increased lot size and the increased floor space index, none of them have impacted a south-facing kitchen window in the way that this house has. Those houses have all, the houses in Can we pull up the pictures that we submitted? Sorry, I should have asked for that at the beginning. In particular, probably Those are the ones in the other submission, sorry. So, okay, could you go down a little bit more? Thank you. And one more page. Okay, we'll start here. As you can see, and this is an example of, in our neighborhood, the house, the bungalow has a garage attached to the house. And most of the houses in our neighborhood do not have garages attached to them, so they have provided the buffer of their own driveway. In the instances where there is a garage attached to the house, that, that house's kitchen window overlooks their own garage. So that construction, the two-story construction that was built beside that house has less impact on that house than this one would have on one twenty-three Durant Avenue. And my sister and I did a survey of the neighborhood and we found a hundred and eight in the, uh, renovations in their surrounding eight-block radius. And the only house that has a the sunlight affected in the same way that ours would is actually the construction at one twenty-one Durant Avenue. If you go down, I believe there's a picture that shows that as well. Oh, so that's the kitchen, that's the light that we will, we have now, and if you go down at just a tiny bit more, there should be a picture that shows the two houses. There it is. Um, photo number ten shows what one nineteen and one twenty-one look like now. The house on the, the bungalows kitchen is like ours, it's a south-facing kitchen, and the construction at one nineteen severely blocks the light from entering the kitchen. The same would happen if the house at one twenty-one were raised up, and it would block the light into coming into my mother's kitchen at one twenty-three Durant Avenue. So really, it is a question of this particular construction beside ours. It's the way the two houses themselves are constructed. Um, we would like to point out that because it is a south-facing kitchen, but the light is being affected, if this construction were on the other side of the house, on the north side, it would have less impact. Um, the bottom two photos that we've included into our summary show houses in their neighborhood that have been constructed, two-story constructions that leave no construction over the garage. The single garage level has been maintained. Um, if possible, that is what we have been asking them to do, so that then light can enter the kitchen still, and they would still have an increased living space. I thank you for letting me speak today on behalf of my mother, and I hope that you take our concerns into consideration.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Iqbal?
Hi, uh, sorry, Your Honor?
Yes.
How we have addressed her concerns at this time is that we have reduced the size of the garage, we've brought the garage inward, so now we're within the bylaw limits of the setback. And we've also reduced the height of the building to be within the bylaw, the bylaw limits, right? Uh, so I'm, uh, and I mean, we've also offered her skylight, uh, in her, in her home, right, at our cost. And, because now we're within the bylaw limits for the height, we're, we're within the bylaw limits of the setback as well. We're further away from her, from her property.
So, so how has she responded? I was gonna suggest that one of the other applications we had today offered to contribute towards a skylight, it seemed, and you say you've offered to buy the, pay for the skylight. Uh, so what kind of response did you get from, uh, uh, the neighbor?
Uh, she, she still does not accept that, uh, that offer, right? And, uh, and, and in the previous meeting, we did talk to her as well, and I've paid my architect and, uh, multiple times to have the modification ma, made, right? And we've gone to, to get new bylaw, uh, the, the the by, the notice, the bylaw notice. So every time we had to make payments, right? And, um, right, this is the, the best we could do is we brought the house inward, we reduced the height to be further away from her property, to be within the bylaw limits, and, and the same thing for the height as well. We reduced the height of the, the house. And we need four bedrooms, that's the only reason we're questioning, uh, the, the minor variance from you.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Uh, Mr. Iqbal, I see on the uh, site plan that, uh, one twenty-three Durant Avenue is indicated as a two-story brick house. It's actually a one-story brick house, is that correct?
Uh, uh, sorry, one, one, which one? One twenty-three?
One twenty-three.
Uh, I'm not sure, one twenty-three Durant, one twenty-three Durant, it could, yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm not aware of that. It could be a mistake in the, in the, from the, from the uh, drafter, from the architect, but
Cause that, that's where your, that's where the neighbor lives.
Absolutely, that's a bungalow.
Yeah, it could, yeah, yeah, sorry, it could be a bungalow, it could, uh, that could be a drafting error from the architect. I can, I'll speak to him about that and make that change once we submit for
All right. All right.
Thank you so much.
Sir, thank you. Uh, panel, do you have any, Aaron, do you have a question?
As I do, I just want to ask you, uh, with the existing building before the renovation, what is your FSI? I mean, your current FSI before the
Uh, current, uh, our current FSI, I'm sorry, not the technical. But, uh, cur, uh, uh, cause it's a single-story dwelling, so our current FSI is, I, I think the the, the whole square foot of the house is like seven hundred square feet only. It's, it's not a big, big house, right? So it's, it's a bungalow in a terrible shape. Uh, rodent infestation in the basement and all that, so we're trying to address all that. I, I mean, and we're, we're trying to make the neighborhood better, right? That's probably
So, so Mr. Iqbal, can you tell us what the, uh, FSI is of the existing house?
Uh, the, uh, it's approximately seven hundred square feet.
Oh, the FSI, what percentage is it? Is it more than thirty-five?
Uh, sorry, I'll, I'll tell you what's the current, uh, thirty-five by ninety. Uh, seven hundred divided by thirty, one fifty. It's only twenty-two percent.
Okay. All right.
Well, thank you.
Larry? Oh, no, Carl, Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you, to the applicant, you mentioned that the, um, the north side setback has been, uh, increased from your previous application. If I'm correct, you've got, you're proposing point nine one meters or three feet currently. What did you have last time?
Uh, last time, it was way more, right? Uh, uh, let me, sorry, uh, please give me a chance, uh, to find out here. Give me two seconds, please. Uh, what was it here? I'm just trying to pull up the twenty twenty one notice. Yeah. It was zero point three meters on the north side, so now we've brought it within the bylaw limits, but
So, so you've substantially increased that setback. You've at the, at the present time, with your proposal, if I'm correct, there's five feet between the, your proposed north wall and the south wall of the adjacent neighbor, correct?
Yes, sir.
The reason I'm asking that is I was on the panel that turned down that last application, and I do remember a, a really, um, hefty discussion on the kitchen window. Um, so, and the issue was that your proposal was actually quite close to the property line. So I just want to confirm that there's been a substantial change in the application.
Yes, there's been a substantial change, and we paid the architect quite a bit of money too.
So I
He's an engineer, I believe, not an architect. You've got an engineering stamp on there.
Yes, yeah, there's an engineer who's taking care of our project.
I see the proposed site plan says that your current floor space index is thirty-five percent.
Uh, yes, it could be. I'm, I'm not sure. I, I don't have the technical knowledge to actually calculate all, uh, that, but, yeah.
That's what it says on the proposed site.
It could be thirty-five percent.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Panel? Panel, we're in committee now. Uh, do we have any comments or a motion? Yes, Larry?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that Carl and others may have been on this one before. I, I, I saw, what I see is of, you know, this has been before committee now twice. Each time it's been reduced. Uh, we now have in front of us, uh, an application which really only has two very minor variances. Um, and, you know, height, uh, there's no height variance, there's no setback variance. Um, there's no landscaping variance. Um, I think this is a, a very, frankly, a very reasonable proposal. Uh, I appreciate that it's gonna have, uh, some impact on uh, the neighbor's light, but on the other hand, you know, this is almost as of right, and, uh, you, you know, the, the architect and the proponent have done, I think, a pretty good job of trying to come down and fit within the parameters of the bylaw. And, you know, this is a stretch of a lot of bungalows. It's not surprising that we're going to see um, this and more, uh, applications for redevelopment along this strip. So I think this is a reasonable proposal. I think it's supportable now. Um, and, uh, if anyone, if, if no one has anything further, Um, and, uh, if anyone, if, if no one has anything further, uh, to add, I'm happy to move approval. I don't think there are any conditions.
Yeah. Okay. I, I just want to make a comment before I ask for a second. It seems to me this applicant is, has worked very hard to, uh, get this proposal down to these two small, uh, uh, variances and, and even offered the neighbor, uh, to, uh, address the problem of lights and, and, uh, uh, you know, the, the neighbor doesn't, doesn't, hasn't responded to that. Well, uh, the offer is there and it seems to me it's a reasonable offer. And it would solve the problem. So I would support this application. So do we have a second, Eric?
To ask Larry a question, would you, Larry, would you be open to screening the, uh, the ground floor deck is high?
Yes.
And there's a balcony as well.
Thank you, Carl. I do actually have that in my notes and I, I, uh, I overlooked it. Thanks for, uh, thanks for catching that. I, I would agree with that.
Okay. So, and Aaron, you second the motion?
And I just want to add a comment that, um, it's always, um, a native chicken question. When you have a screen, you cast shadows and and the neighbor was actually complaining about shadow and privacy, but, uh, I'll let you guys decide. Either way, I'm fine with that.
Well, it's either, it's either, but it won't shadow on the, won't cast a shadow on the kitchen.
No, I, I think it's a, it's a, you know, it's reasonable, given the concerns about um, the next door neighbor. I think it's reasonable to have privacy screening. So I'm happy with that.
Okay. And, and Carl, you second the motion? All in favor?
I believe Aaron seconded it, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, did he? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. All of, uh, and so the motion has been passed. The application's approved. Item number 26771 Pape Avenue. And the, uh, purpose of this application to legalize and to maintain the existing one-story ancillary building, a detached garage in the rear yard, which was constructed without the benefit of a building permit. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. We have a report from planning and we have support from 769A Pape Avenue. Uh, Lee Paul?
Lee, you've been unmuted.
Mr. Lee Paul?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, please speak up a little bit.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes. Can we have your name and address?
Yes, uh, my name is Lee Paul. I'm representing the, uh, property owner of 771 Pape Avenue. My home address is 139 Alvin Falls Boulevard in Hamilton.
Okay. So, uh, I just want, before we take it into committee, because I don't think we need a, a presentation. It's relatively straightforward, but I see that you have only 12% soft landscaping in the rear yard. Is there, is there some way we can improve that with permeable paving or something of the sort?
Um, we could, yes. We can introduce some, um, sort of internal locking, I guess.
So is the applicant aware of the planning report recommending refusal?
Uh, is this for me?
Yeah.
No, I'm not aware of it.
Maybe we could pull that up.
Yeah. Well, it's because of soft landscaping, they recommend a refusal.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, you know, I, I just don't know how to, um, achieve more landscaping because the existing garage takes up most of the uh, area in the rear yard.
That's the problem though. The garage was built without appropriate approvals. I don't think you would have received approval to do this.
Yes, that's, that's correct. The garage was, was, uh, built without a permit.
So is the garage over, but you, uh, you don't have any, um, you don't have a variance with respect to the size of the garage, so it's not oversized. It complies with the bylaw in that respect.
Actually undersized. That's the first variance.
Pardon?
I think it's undersized. I think the parking has to be bigger, really correctly.
Yeah.
Yes, the parking, uh, inside the garage, uh, is what we're asking for a variance, uh, to, um, uh,
Because the site is not wide enough.
And the bulk of the building is the reason why you have such, such small landscaping, which is the reason behind the planning department recommendation. I, I frankly support planning. I, I don't think that I don't think that this is a case where we should be dickering around with a little bit of permeable paving. I don't think that'll solve the problem. This construction shouldn't have proceeded. The fact that it has, we're supposed to look at it as if it came to us before the work was undertaken. If this application came to us before the work was undertaken, I would not recommend it. I wouldn't support it and I, I'm not going to support it, um, currently either.
Okay.
And your wood deck is existing as well, right?
So just, I'm just looking at, just to the applicant, I'm just looking at the uh, location map. Maybe, uh, guys, can we call the, the location map? So if you zoom that in a little bit, it looks like nobody else along here has uh, any kind of structure in their in their rear yard. So are you, are you the only, are you the only property owner along this stretch that has a garage?
Uh, that I wouldn't know. I'm not familiar with the area. Um, we're just a company, um, obtaining the building permit for the, uh, homeowner.
And I guess it speaks to Carl's point about whether we would have approved this um, if it came before us, uh, prior to getting, being built and getting a permit. Um, one might think that, you know, the lot fabric in this area really doesn't support a rear garage.
Yeah, the lots are very short.
They, it is the only lot in this block plan with a mutual laneway. All the other houses don't have access to the back.
Oh, so there's a mutual drive here.
That's right.
But, but the, uh, the garage only service is 771. Is that correct, Aaron?
That's right, yeah.
So, and it's on an angle in order to get into it. All right. But to the point that was made earlier, the reason there are no buildings in the backyard or no garages is there's no access to them. There's no rear lane and there's no driveways. There's a, there's a driveway between 771 and 769A. And there would appear to be one between 767 and 765. Maybe one 769 and 767 as well, but the rest don't have driveways. And, and to Larry's point, I, I, I think that's the very issue. The fabric doesn't support a garage, certainly not a building of this size in the rear yard. And I frankly don't, I don't see the applicant, um, knowing that and then, and then decide. Basically, I, I have trouble understanding how anyone in this day and age could put that amount of construction on a site and not feel that they needed a building permit. That, I don't believe that that's reasonable.
Uh, so prior to the garage being built, were both 771 and uh, 769, were they parking in the rear?
Uh, they shared the driveway and I'm not sure if 771 had a parking, um, uh, lane there.
So what's on 769? Do they have a parking pad in the back?
Yes, there is.
Is it concrete?
It's asphalt.
So they don't have soft landscaping either? Or enough soft landscaping, I assume.
Um, so just looking at your client's house, so it looks like there's been some renovation work done recently. Was that a new second story been put on?
That I'm not aware of. Um, our, our task is basically the, um, detached garage.
Uh, well, are we in committee yet, Chair, or not?
Yes.
Uh, I'm inclined to, uh, side with Carl on this one. I, uh, I, I think in this instance, had had, uh, an application been brought before us for a garage of this size on this size of a lot, I think I would have had some difficulty with that. Um, uh, particularly given the, the impact on landscaping. I mean, it's 12% is fairly dramatically, uh, below what, uh, is required. So uh, I, I, I'm not supportive of this application either.
Okay, let's have a motion. Carl?
Uh, it's your new Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move that the application be denied approval.
Okay, seconder. Larry, all in favor? Application's refused. Number 2788 Kennelworth Avenue. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a third-story addition with a front balcony and a rear Juliet balcony, a new front porch and a rear deck. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant in a five-form letter of support from properties on Kennelworth Avenue. Uh, Costa Durbish?
Yes, hello, uh, hello, committee?
Yes, hello. Can we have your name and address for the record, sir?
Uh, my name is Costa Durbish. Uh, I, I'm, I'm working at KFA Architects and Planners at 197 Spadina Avenue.
Yes. Okay, so could you just give us a quick, a quick overview of this application? There's no opposition, but you have seven variances, so we'd just like to know what it's about.
Sure, um, would you like me to proceed with the, with a, with my presentation or you just want a quick overview?
Quick overview is good.
Okay.
I have smart colleagues.
Right. Uh, well, it's, it's basically a, it's an addition, uh, to the front. Uh, we're extending the, um, the porch area to, to have it enclosed and, and, uh, uh, designing a front, uh, landscaping feature there that kind of follows the existing, uh, porch area. Um, then, uh, it proceeds with a, a front bump out and, and which will, which is occurring at the second floor. Um, and there will be an additional third floor as well. Um, that, that, that has a, uh, that will have a window well and um, will have, uh, uh, much, uh, much less of a shadow impact, uh, to the adjacent, uh, existing detached dwellings. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm open to answering any questions, uh, uh, for, for the proposal, but we feel it's, uh, it's, given our, given our back and forth with staff, uh, and given the height and the density increases, we feel that it's a, uh, acceptable form, uh, form of proposal within the neighborhood context here.
Thank you. Panel, any questions? Okay. Comments? Do we have a motion? Larry?
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to move forward on this one, Chair. Um, uh, I, I actually thought this is a reasonable proposal as well. The variances before us are, uh, as you point out, there are seven, but they're, they're, you know, cumulatively fairly minor. Uh, I thought the design was, uh, quite, uh, reasonable and I, I think is sympathetic to um, the housing stock along this street. Um, the main variances are really to deal with the front yard setback and uh, I think that if you look along the line of the existing front houses, um, this wouldn't be out of line with, um, uh, what's there already, particularly those with porches. And I think the, the applicant is trying to, uh, address the front yard landscaping by doing something creative. Uh, and I think it's, it's reasonably good. So I, I would support this application. And, uh, I don't think there are any conditions, so I'll move approval.
Would you consider putting nor, uh, putting screening on the north and the south edge of the, um, main floor deck? It, the deck is a considerable distance off grade. So there's a fair degree of overview. If you look at the, um, the side elevation, which is, hold on a second, I'll give you the number. A501. Let's see, I agree with you. I think it's actually a very nice submission, but that deck's a long way up and that I think it should be screened. The wood railing, yeah. I'm assuming it's only railing height. I, I just, because you see the distance between the grade and the, and the deck, it's, it's so there's a fair degree of overlook there. And it's a big deck, so I think it can accommodate screening on the two sides.
Uh, yeah, I guess so. It's, it, there is a, um, there is a, uh, mutual drive between this proposal and, and one of the neighbors next door. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, they're proposing to put a wood slot fence in anyways. I don't think, uh, making it a privacy screen is incrementally, um, that more onerous. So sure, we can put privacy screening on it. On the side.
Yeah.
All in favor? Have your approval. Thank you. Item number 28. 217 Ferris Road. The purpose of this application to construct a one-story ancillary building, a detached garage to the rear of the dwelling. We have material submitted by the applicant and a report from Urban Forestry. Uh, Mustafa Khalil?
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Committee. My name is Mustafa Khalil, 2MK, 2MK Architects, 3461 Dixie Road in Mississauga.
Okay, I don't think, sir, we need a presentation on this one. Uh, do you have anything you want to say to the panel before we go into committee?
No, I'm good. Like, I saw the Urban Forestry report and we're good to comply with all the conditions. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, panel, do you have any questions, comments, or emotions? Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is very straightforward. I don't have any concerns with the application. I'd like to move approval subject to the, and there's two forestry conditions. One is forestry condition number two. And the second one has to do with providing root-sensitive construction and root-sensitive exploration and they're detailed on the forestry report.
Okay, seconder. Aaron, all in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 29. 2447 Gerard Street East. The purpose of this application to construct a one-story ancillary building, a detached garage in the rear yard. The existing parking pad will be removed. Uh, Thomas Burgess Sinclair?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect, thank you. So, um, so just to clarify here.
Perhaps, sir, could you just give us your name and your address before you start?
Yes, uh, my name is Tom Sinclair. I'm the owner of 2447 Gerard Street East. I'm the owner of 2447 Gerard Street East. So just to clarify, um, there's not actually an existing parking pad, um, where I would, I'm proposing to construct, uh, a small shed. Um, so nothing is going to be removed. Um, so I'm not sure why the, uh, that's included there. But currently, right now, where I'm proposing to build the shed, uh, on the right side of the plan there, um, it's just a, uh, it's grass and a, uh, not very well-used garden. It's fully shaded, so it's really not a loss.
Speaking of the purpose of the application, it's also not a garage, correct? It's a shed?
Uh, correct, correct.
The purpose of the application perhaps needs to be revised to indicate that the ancillary building is a shed and then the remainder, um, about the parking pad can be deleted because it's not there.
Uh huh, correct.
Okay. Sabrina, it should say ancillary building shed rather than detached garage.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we'll make those changes.
Thank you. Okay. Panel, any further questions? Do we have a motion? Yes, Aaron?
I'll try and make a motion. Um, I think that is a very straightforward application and I'm glad that there's no, uh, landscape reduction. Uh, perhaps because it is a shed, you don't need to extend the driveway all the way to the back, so, uh, I would like to approve this application.
All right. You seconded, Carl?
Yeah.
All in favor? Have your approval, thank you, sir. Item number 30. 745 Palmerston Avenue. The purpose of this application to alter the existing two-story townhouse dwelling by replacing the existing one and two-story additions with a new two-story addition and to construct a covered front porch, a front first-floor rear deck and a ground-floor side north courtyard platform, also to replace the existing one-story ancillary building with a new one-story ancillary building, a detached garage in the rear yard abutting the laneway with this application. Uh, I think I skipped one. Did we deal with, uh, Gerard Street East?
Yes.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, that's the one that we just dealt with, with the shed and the removal of the front yard parking pad.
Okay, because I still had my.
Sure.
My system wasn't working.
Sure, so we're on item 30 then.
Okay, so this item 745 Palmerston has, the material is submitted by the applicant. We have two form letters in support and opposition from 743 Palmerston Avenue. Uh, Gloria Apostolou?
Hi.
Yes?
My name is Gloria Apostolou and I'm the architect and agent for 745 Palmerston Avenue.
And your address?
32 Albany Avenue.
All right, thank you. Can we have your presentation because there is some opposition?
Yes. We are proposing to alter the two-story townhouse by replacing the existing rear additions with a new two-story addition and to reconstruct the front porch in the same footprint. I would like to clarify that we have amended our application to remove proposed work to the existing garage, but none of the variances were affected by the garage, so they remain as they were mailed out. So there is no work to the rear garage. Um, I'd like to explain that the proposed design includes a courtyard in the middle of the house in order to bring daylight into the row house condition. This intention for daylight is impacting most of our variances, but we are still in keeping with the density and depth of many houses on the street and our amassing does not negatively impact the immediate neighbors with shading. In our supplementary documents of January 16th, we show how comparable variances were recently granted by the committee with similar greater statistics. We also show the shading effect of our proposed addition at 2:00 PM through various seasons and how the orientation of the property facing west casts shadow primarily onto our own yard and not the others. These diagrams were shared also with the neighbors on either side of us and they were satisfied with them. We're asking for approval for four variances. The first variance is for building depth. We were unable to meet the 14-meter required depth because of how the area is distributed around the courtyard, it stretches the length of the building. We are still less deep than the house to our immediate north and we have documented eight recent committee approvals for similar or greater depth in the neighborhood. Our second variance is for floor space index of .86 and we also believe this to be in keeping with the density of the area. There were 10 similar greater FSI variances recently approved. Variances three and four are for the minimum distance between main walls of house and in our case, that's the width of the courtyard. We're unable, unable to meet the 5.5 meter and 11 meter setbacks due to the width of the property, but we have maximized the distance between the main walls as much as possible and we are planning to sprinkle the courtyard windows for building code requirements when we get to that stage. Our precedent also shows that there were two other similar minimum distance variances approved. We have consulted with both adjacent neighbors and understand that they have no objections to the variances. I know that the neighbor to the south is concerned about the construction process as it relates to the safety of their property, which is understandable. Um, we have, as you mentioned, two letters of support on the file from other homeowners and we believe this project, this proposal will integrate well with the area. Uh, we are open to any questions or comments.
Yeah, I believe, uh, Sabrina, I believe we have to amend the purpose to delete the reference to the, uh, garage being, uh, replaced.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, we will note that.
Thank you. Okay, any questions of the applicant? Okay, let's move on. Darcy Watson?
Darcy, you've been unmuted. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my name is Darcy Watson. My address is 1390 Dufferin Street and I'm speaking on behalf of the owners of 743 Palmerston Avenue, the home attached to the south of 745 Palmerston as one of three row houses. I just wanted to.
Ms. Watson, Ms. Watson, I just want to say apropos of what the applicant said, that if your concerns, if your client's concerns relate to construction, that's not within our mandate.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay. Um, okay, well, the, uh, applicant's main, I mean, sorry, the, our, my client's main concern then is regarding the right-of-way in the rear yard. Um, it's noted on the plan that's up right now. Um, but there's a, a right-of-way that extends from the applicant's south, uh, lot line to the north lot line and then east towards the lane. So as, because the, uh, existing structure is remaining as is, um, my, my client is very happy with that because, um, they want it, but I do just want to note that they do want to keep the existing gate and the shared fence and the existing path of access to the laneway, um, even though the existing garage is built on and blocking that right-of-way. So they just want to make clear that they are not relinquishing the right-of-way noted on the survey.
Nor should they.
Yeah, okay. Um, so they're happy that the, um, applicant has, in this case, just left the plan the way it is instead of extending the carport to the side lot lines. Um, and, uh, secondly, the drawings submitted to the committee, uh, namely the plans and the rear elevation A6, do not show the second-floor wood-framed deck attached to my client's rear facade and therefore the drawings don't reflect the proposal's impact on the sense of openness and privacy that my clients currently enjoy. Uh, the deck is located on the property line abutting where the addition will be constructed and therefore it needs to be protected throughout the build. And then.
Well, that you should take up, your client should take up with the owner. And are you concerned about privacy?
Um, there are concerns about privacy and light, even though they are to the south and not to the north, but, um, I just want to make clear that the, my clients do not object in principle to the proposed design and are not asking for amendments to the design, um, or the four variances. Um, they do, they do agree that the design is attractive in keeping with the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And in terms of the construction issues, um, they're happy to hear that the applicant is willing to take measures to, um, support their house during construction and to minimize the impact of construction.
Okay.
And that's it, so thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Uh, Betsy Wang and Serge Abramovic?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Serge Abramovic, uh, you can call me Serge. I am the partner of Bingye Wang, who is the daughter and power of attorney of the owner of 747 Palmerston Ave. Uh, we represent 747 Palmerston Ave and.
What's your address, sir? What's your address, sir? Your address?
Uh, 32 Dalton Road.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, uh, yeah, we are the attached house to the north. And the, uh, would you like me to continue with the concerns?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, well, the way, the way that, uh, the house, um, our house was, uh, planned is all the windows are to the south. Essentially, at the, uh, entrance, at the front of the house, there is an office and then you would walk through the, you know, long ways of the house, which has all the windows to the south, and at the end, there is, um, a screen door, a sliding screen door. Um, above, um, again, you would walk down a hallway and all the bedrooms' windows are to the south and at the end, there is a door that opens onto a deck. Um, so we're not sure how the effect would be if all of the south windows would be blocked because that would essentially leave for the entire house one screen door in the back to let light in. All right, thank you.
Okay. So, um, uh, Serge, uh, I just, um, can we put up the, the survey or the site plan? I want to see how far back this property will go be. Okay. Which one is, uh, which one is your property?
Uh, to the north in this picture, it's above.
Right, above. Okay, so I don't know how far back. I don't know how far back this property will go behind yours, but it looks like it's, uh, is there a.
It's almost in line, Mr. Chairman. If you look at the, the site plan's actually well, really well-drawn. The site plan shows the outline of 747, which is what Serge is, you're at 747 or you're representing 747, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there you can see the outline of 747. So there's a slot of land in between the, uh, addition and 747.
Uh, so there is an existing two-story structure there and a bit of an extension on the one-story. So is that existing two-story that's already there? Um, does that, um, affect your light at all?
Uh, there is, um, uh, flush with the, um, with your current property. Uh, there is a wall that continues north and there is a window there that goes into the living room. Um, from there, we can see, and the dining room has a large window there, um, that, uh, it partially covers, but not completely. And beyond that, there are two kitchen windows that are completely open and then beyond that, there's a, a bathroom window that is completely open to the south.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense of whether the current structure that is, um, off the rear of 745 is, is that obscure your windows at all?
Um, we may be able to see it, but it doesn't obscure light. Uh, I, I know from going through the, through the house that, uh, it's, it's very well-lit.
So how much, so we have to know, so we have to ask Ms. Apostolou just how much difference this would make? How?
Mr. Chairman, just, just to clarify, perhaps the drawing isn't being read correctly. The, the addition, which is two stories in height, doesn't come to the north property line, um, completely, only half of it does.
That's right.
The other half is an open courtyard. So there's actually an L-shaped open space, a J on the north side of number 747. So do you see on the site plan where it says proposed courtyard? That's all planting and it, and extends up so that that's open space. There's a fence there for privacy, but it's open space. And then there's, there's this slot of land, uh, that exists currently, um, adjacent to the north, uh, the south limit, sorry, of number 747. So that the, to Larry's point, it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't appear that the addition here is really creating all that much problem. It's, it only occurs for, for half of the addition because the other half is a courtyard and the, and then there's a two-story portion. So just to clarify that the, I, that the drawing is being properly read, that there's more open space there than might appear to be the case.
So is this proposed new two-story rear addition on the spot where it, there's nothing there or it's a one-story at this point? So it's different than, than what's existing?
It looks partial, it looks partial, Chair.
Half and half.
Yeah, and I, I would note that the proposed courtyard is actually a little bit larger than the opening that is there currently.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, so let's go back to Ms. Apostolou and get her take on this.
Uh, thank you for that. I wish we had the opportunity with our neighbor at 747 to walk them through this in three dimensions and show the effect of sunlight because the, um, part of the opening between the two houses is being improved. As you pointed out, we are introducing an eight-foot setback from where there currently is a building right now. So that courtyard space is adding a big light well, I think serving both properties. The addition at the back is, uh, uh, as we said, it's straddling something that exists and a little bit beyond, but we are still not as deep as our neighbor at 747. So they have the deepest property of the three of us in a row. We are open to reducing our overall length by two feet. This is something I have discussed with the owners and we can pull everything back by two feet and then maybe be, um, you know, uh, two feet stepped back. Right now, 747 is about five feet ahead of us and 743 is, uh, six feet behind us. I'm going to double-check on that number. But we are trying to position ourselves so, somewhere between the two at the rear yards and we are okay with moving the addition back by two feet.
So that, that space, that two feet will come off of the kitchen on the ground floor and the master bedroom on the second floor?
I think, I think it would come out of the courtyard. We would just reduce the circulation space, keep the area very, very similar to what we have, but less, it would be less, so we wouldn't be. Keep the area very, very similar to what we have, but less, it would be less, so we wouldn't be incurring more, but just move that volume back.
So the courtyard would be smaller?
The courtyard, uh, we could look at it both ways. But I was thinking the courtyard would be reduced by two feet and that larger um, massing would be set back. So I think that might be more of the um, visual that the neighbor at seven forty-seven is referring to. Like we'll just bring back uh, the kitchen addition at the back.
So would it have a beneficial effect on, on seven forty-seven in that you would be blocking fewer windows?
Uh, there are many, many windows along that length. I think it's super understandable. They enjoy that openness. We were trying to create a bigger void in separation between the houses um, in consideration. I think there's very little direct light um, that we are blocking, but definitely the view is not, um, is going to change. Moving the massing back would open up the rear of seven forty-seven to more direct views, which I think is uh, probably beneficial to them.
So you would reduce the depth to fifteen point four or five in variance number one?
Fifteen point four or five. Let me just do a conversion of two feet to metro.
Oh, pardon me, that's meters. I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's not seventeen, it's not fifteen.
Uh, but for uh, relative scale, we are eight feet ahead of seven forty-five Palmerston. So bringing it back two feet is six feet ahead of them and seven feet behind our neighbor to the north.
So how does it change variance number one?
Yeah, your FSI.
Our FSI would be reduced if anything.
What would variance number one be?
Uh, seventeen point four or five minus point six. Sixteen point eight five.
Right, so would your FSI be reduced? Because does your courtyard count as FSI?
The circulation area next to it has FSI and that would be reduced.
Oh, right.
So the number would come down. I'm confident it will not go up. Which is, I think, the important um, variable, but if we need to calculate that, I can.
It's eighty-five point seven two square meters.
On all floors? We could calculate that FSI.
Is it necessary, guys, to?
I don't think so.
To recalculate the FSI? I'm, I'm comfortable with.
Okay, I would hate to get the number wrong.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with, uh, I mean, what you're asking for now is really not that excessive over what's allowed. So if you're gonna reduce the length, uh, I don't, I personally don't need to see the FSI change.
That's fine. Okay.
While, while, while we're weighing in, I actually, I, I don't see the need for the revision. I, I think the application as it is before us is reasonable. I think that the way in which it addresses the property, the north is reasonable. Uh, taking some of the building off the back so that the, the other building, the one to the north extends further out, is fine, but then you're gonna lose it from the courtyard. Uh, I, I don't think it's necessary. I, I'm actually quite pleased with the application as it stands.
I'm glad you said that, Carl, because I was thinking the same thing. Um, I, I didn't have a problem with the original application either. I thought the light well was a kind of a creative thing, not only for the applicant, but also for the neighbor to the north. I, I, I was not uncomfortable with the original application. Aaron, what do you think?
I'm so glad that you two agree with me what I'm thinking as well. I mean, you know, I, I love courtyard. I love this kind of thing. And I was thinking about, yeah, if you, if you reduce the depth and there's no variance on height and everything, it basically create a set of boundary. There's no way the architect can suddenly create another mass somewhere we don't know. So even as is, I'm very comfortable to approve it. So maybe I can make a uh, motion.
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to approve the proposal as is without the amendment we discussed. And I don't think there's any condition, so that's it. Anyone second me?
Carl's seconder?
Yeah.
All in favor? Have your approval. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We will make that change to the purpose to remove um, the mentioning of the garage, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Please, thank you.
Okay. Number thirty-one, four ninety-nine Bathurst Street. The purpose of the application to convert the existing vehicle service shop into an eating establishment with an outdoor patio. With this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant, email correspondence from this, from uh, transportation services, staff reports from transportation services and planning. Uh, Stephen Qui.
Any members? My name, my name is Stephen Chi, a planner from Design Plan Services.
Your address, sir?
It's nine hundred East Mall.
Okay, uh.
The drawing that's on the screen now, is that your, that's not your current proposal, is it?
That's not the current proposal.
Okay, there's another subsequent proposal.
Yeah, there should be, I think that's the revised site plan.
Took some parking that one, right? That's right.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we can, can we have your uh, presentation? Because there is some opposition.
Sounds good. So the proposal is to convert the existing vehicle service shop into a restaurant with outdoor patio. Uh, I would like to know that prior to the committee of adjustment hearing, we had extensive discussions with the city planning and transportation, transportation, transportation services departments. And in result, uh, we have agreed to eliminate the proposed three parking spaces in the front yard, which will eliminate variance number three uh, on the public, public notice. Um, instead, the owner has proposed bicycle parking racks and soft landscaping in the front yard. Both planning and transportation services have been satisfied and provided positive recommendations. And we have reviewed the staff report for community, community planning dated January at eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And we have no issues with those recommended conditions. So there are two variances associated with the proposal, and both of them are related to the proposed use. As restaurant and patio is currently not permitted on the site. However, it is my opinion that the proposed use will improve the current condition of the site from a more intense use, which used to be a vehicle service shop to a less intense use. Further, the proposal will improve the streetscape and will fit in better with the surrounding context compared to a vehicle service shop. I believe the proposal and associated variances represent good planning and meet the foretest under the section forty-five one of the Planning Act. And we respectfully request that the committee approve the variances and thank you and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, panel? Carl?
Could you clarify the, the deck, the um, the patio deck? It doesn't have a roof or a trellis over it, or does it?
Sorry, uh, can you repeat that question, uh?
The deck, the patio deck, does it have any kind of a roof or a trellis over it?
I don't think so.
Um, so can we confirm that it does or it doesn't? Because.
If you go to the site plan? Yeah, I don't see any roof uh, over the patio.
So there's no, okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Beverly Bennett?
Beverly, you've been unmuted.
Good afternoon. My name is Beverly Bennett. And I live at ninety-seven Fuller Avenue. However, I am um, a trustee of College Street United Church, which is located just across the street from, from the um, proposed restaurant. I, I, um, it's just that we, we have a condo above and um, I had just been concerned with how much, how, how much of the space the patio was going to cover, like what it, was it like? But I see that it's coming right up to the sidewalk, so I guess um, your questions, you, you really answered my questions, so I really don't have any objections. I was just wanted to know as for the residents in the condo.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Chi, we don't need to go back to you because there's no objections or concerns. Uh, panel, any further questions or do we have a motion? Larry?
Yeah, I think this is a very welcome reuse and adaptive reuse of an existing um, auto mechanics facility while, um, and it is in an area right near Bathurst and College, which is a, a fairly intensive commercial area. So I think um, this kind of use in that neighborhood and on that street uh, is quite appropriate and uh, quite welcome in my view. Um, I would move approval subject to uh, planning conditions and transportation conditions.
All right, we have a seconder. Aaron, all in favor? Have your approval. Thank you. Number thirty-two. Eighty-seven Mackenzie Crescent. Uh, per, purpose of this application is to uh, alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached valley by constructing a third-floor addition with a rear patio, rear rooftop patio to be located above the two-story rear addition. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. Uh, Mr. Lolos?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Committee members, my name is Georgia Lolos, representing the file in front of us today. Can you hear me correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I mean, uh, this is a pretty simple.
All right, we need you, we need your address again, Mr. Lolos.
Two twenty Duncan Mills Road, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome. Um, as I was saying, this is a pretty straightforward application. It's uh, it's, it's just adding to the existing two-and-a-half-story um, um, our unit itself. It's nicely nestled between the two owners. The current homeowner has um, open communications with both adjacent neighbors and they're all in favor. They have no, 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 no concerns. Um, so I believe um, it, just in the nature of the variance itself, being the GFA itself being, you know, a low, low percentage, I think it's a pretty um, minimal requirement. It's a favorable application to request.
All right.
A quick question. I, I like, I like the proposal, but just want to confirm on page A zero-six. You mentioned about new fans and uh, could it be a privacy screen? And for this, for this size of patio, I think a privacy screen is necessary.
Through you, Mr. Chair, Aaron, correct. I mean, right now, the patio itself is greater than it, than it, than it was. Given us an error that by us putting the addition on, we're actually taken away from that patio area. But we, we would have no problems retaining a privacy screen accordingly. We can make it part of the conditions.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm happy to support this application, but I'll leave it to committee and we will discuss.
Okay, we're in committee now. Do we have, Aaron, did anybody else have comments or a question?
I agree with Aaron. Has he got a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I turned that suggestion into a motion to support this application with a proposal of privacy screen uh, on the
All right.
East and West side.
To one point five meters.
One point five meters, correct.
You second that, Carl?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you. Okay, I believe I have to go to the next. Franch. Okay, thirty-four Chudell Avenue. Uh, purpose of the application to construct a two-story ancillary building detached garage with storage area in the rear yard abutting the laneway. Uh, with this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. We have a report from planning. And we have uh, correspondence and support from thirty six Chudell and four form letters and support from twenty-nine Arrow Gray Road and twenty-eight forty-six and twenty-five Chudell. Uh, Mr. Lolos, you're up again.
Mr. Chairman, would you like my address again? Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead. Can't hear you now. Mr. Lolos?
Okay, this is interesting. One second, please, sir. I gotta, if you can hear me.
Georgia Lolos, we have you unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me now, sir?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry, thank you. My apologies, I don't know which one it was. Um, Mr. Chairman, we're asking for a deferral because um, we're requesting a deferral based on the notion that unfortunately we um, at the last minute, we uh, we've got a refusal from planning that all of a sudden sort of took us all by surprise, given the scenario that last, late last week, we had favorable consideration from them. So um, to work with planning, um, to understand and recognize their, their greatest concerns, we're asking for a deferral um, on this application to, to go back and revisit our, their concerns, our means of working things and uh, and hopefully come to an conclusion and circle back at a later date to committee. Um, I have the whole, yes, sir.
Mr. Lolos, could you just, for the record, because this, each one is separate, we need your address again.
Two twenty Duncan Mills Road, sir.
Okay, so uh, I just, uh, I'm just looking to see why, why did the planning say you, uh, that we should refuse the application?
Well, planning, um, again, the last, um, Sunday, two days before the, our, our hearing day, we got a letter stating that planning department does not support the application because of various obvious reasons to things. Basically, it's a two-story, two-story garage, ancillary structure, which actually, actual fact, we designed, we designed in such a way that's actually a one-and-a-half-story. The reasons are pretty straightforward why we needed, unfortunately, they don't support a ancillary structure of two-story classifications and um, the dormers, the part more of a privacy issue. They have concern with the dormers, the windows. And I believe it's um, it's more to, more in-depth in that. But again, uh, our consideration here, our proposal was that we're only asking for a one-and-a-half-story for additional storage of the owner because she has such a small home in the area. Unfortunately, like I said, they, they just not supporting it and we don't wanna, we don't wanna get, we don't wanna own for a committee with unfavorable conditions because, again, anything can happen and we don't wanna sort of play Russian roulette at this moment, at this point. So we're, we're asking for the time that we need to go back and see if we contain their concerns. If we don't, we'll be back again.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Karen Mang, Mangia?
Mr. Chairman, could, could I just add something? I think there's a misunderstanding by the planning department. If you pull, it's in added, but if we pull up the comments from planning, planning says that the um, the garage will have a second floor for storage along with a window on the laneway side. So it's, is, well, okay, they didn't say lane. I, I'm, I'm wondering if they think this is a laneway suite. Perhaps not. No, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry for interrupting then. I, I thought there was a misunderstanding in the.
I think they're, they're fussed about the height as well, Carl.
They're, they're definitely concerned with the height, but I, I was, I was wondering if they thought it was a laneway suite. But um, they haven't actually used that term. They've talked about the window on the laneway side, which makes it sound like they're concerned that it's a laneway suite. But they haven't actually said that, so I, I, I'm sorry for taking the time, Mike.
I think they're concerned about two stories and the height.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay, uh, Karen Mangat?
Karen, you've been unmuted.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, good afternoon, gentlemen. Uh, my name is Karen Mangat. I am the owner of twenty-seven Earl Grey Road.
So the applicant uh, received a re, a notice of refusal from the planning department at the last minute and is now asking for a, a deferral to get this thing straightened out. Uh, do you consent to a deferral?
I do not. I'd like to go ahead and make my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Damon Isaacs?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We weren't able to connect with Damon Isaacs. Uh, there's no phone number provided and we've sent multiple emails with no reply.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, panel. We need, we need a motion with respect to deferral. Yes, Larry?
Yeah, sure. I'm happy to move a deferral. I, I, I would note to. Sorry?
Go ahead, Larry.
Sorry, uh, I'll move deferral, but I, I, I would like to note to the applicant that um, you know, the height and the two stories or one and a half stories is an issue. Um, I, I think even with members of this panel, it might have been an issue as well. So I think you'd be advised as you, if you do go back and have discussions with uh, planning, um, you, you might be well advised to find ways to reduce the overall height. I'll move deferral.
Okay, second here. Carl, all in favor of the deferral? Have your deferral. Thank you, sir. Item number thirty-four, two thirty-one Rush Home Road. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two and a half story detached dwelling by constructing new sides, south and rear two and a half story additions, a front integral garage, a rear basement walkout, a rear ground floor covered deck and a third story rear balcony. Also, a new two-story ancillary building, detached garage with one laneway suite in the rear abutting the laneway. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, staff reports uh, from uh, urban forestry, opposition from uh, five forty-six Dover Court, two forty-seven A Rush Home Road, two forty-seven Rush Home Road, two forty-five Rush Home Road, nine oh seven dash seven thirty Dover Court Road and nine, uh, we've got nine photographs and an arborist report submitted in opposition by two forty-five Rush Home Road. Sean Tucci?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Sean Tucci. I'm the office principal at Memore Architects Inc., representing the owner today.
What's your address, sir?
Twenty-three twenty-three Youngest Street, Unit five oh three, Toronto, M four P two C nine.
Okay, so we need a presentation because there is some opposition.
Sure. Um, we do have a present, thank you. If we could also at the same time, open up the site plan. So I'm gonna start with that. So this is a addition uh, that we're doing for the customer. The gray area is the existing and then the white area uh, is at the, the lower section of the south of the drawing is being added. And then there's a little bit of jog out at the back. Um, if we look at the uh, presentation and I believe we have a facade, like we have a, yeah, we could go to the next page. Next page. Yep, this is a good sample. Yeah. And the, the diagram on the lower left, uh, the red, the lower left, the red area is the actual existing roof. And what we're really doing is that ex, like extending it to the right. And the way we're doing it, we're keeping the existing look of the house and uh, we are even saving the bricks so that the addition part, we're reusing the bricks from the other side of the house. So paying to the character of the street, character of the neighborhood was very important. We're not introducing any heights. And then on the right side, you would look at, you will see that all, almost all the houses in that area are three-story, three-story is permitted by law and uh, we're not really going anything against what is very common and typical there, not only to this house, which we're simply just extending it to the right side and we're not adding any height to what is, but is also very common on, in the neighborhood, Mr. Chair. Um, and uh, if we can go to the site plan, uh, we are also looking at the comments from and concerns of the neighbors. We have decided to reduce the variances. Um, and I would like to, whenever you see fit, I'm gonna go over that. And most of them are in relation to the uh, to the back ancillary building. So the changes, with your permission, whenever you see fit, Mr. Chair, I'll go over them.
Yeah, let's go over them now, please.
Uh, number two, uh, which says the uh, maximum permitted building width of an ancillary building, it is changing from proposed fourteen point six two, will change to thirteen point six two. And the reason for deduction, I will explain, is to accommodate um, urban forestry's concern for the preservation of one of the trees, which according to our arborists, this change will make that possible. The other change, Mr. Chair, we're doing, so it is gonna change to thirteen point six two, variance number two. Then variance number three, we're eliminating it entirely. And I will go over like how we're changing it. Again, the reason for this, to accommodate some of the concerns of the neighbors as well as address the TRCA uh, comments for preservation of the tree. So with these, with these two changes, we're very confident that we can address TRCA's concern for preservation and forestry for the preservation of the, one of the trees. And should the committee decide to approve the application, we're completely fine to have the decision tied to the satisfaction uh, of, of the forestry and, and and uh, TRC and Mr. Chair. So uh, with that said, um, sorry, urban forestry, my bad. Uh, so in, in general, it's a very common addition. Uh, the, in terms of the um, the GFA, if we didn't have the actual side addition, the bylaw permits us, if we can go back to presentation, the bylaw permits us to go to sixty-nine percent. Um, and uh, this is a very good slide as a floor space index. What we are proposing, we are the green one on the left, uh, which is two thirty-one Rush Homes and uh, the sample ones, as you can see, which are in the same zoning. I understand they may not be in the same block, but they are in the same zoning. So at least as far as the zoning bylaw, they will see them as comparable and they're all like zero point nine and like from zero point six. So we are very much in a very low section of that. And again, if we didn't have that side addition, the bylaw would let us go to sixty-nine percent, like permitted without any requirement from city. And now we're sixty-six percent. So we're even lower than that. So we believe in general, all the variances you have are technical. They are minor in nature and uh, and we think the building is very much in keeping uh, with the character of the neighborhood. Uh, the only thing I'll add, Mr. Chair, is the back, if you can proceed with the site plan, so I'll just address because I know some of the concerns of the neighbors is for that rear. Yeah. So now I'm gonna talk about the rear structure, which is a garage at the rear of the lot, which is a garage in the ground floor. And then we have a laneway suite on the second floor. So this again is uh, the changes we have made, I'll all focus on this and the goal is to preserve a tree. There is a, there is a urban forestry requirement for that tree, as you see, sort of between the ancillary building and the house. You see those two mature trees, which I think is concern of one of neighbors. Uh, one of them, the um, the urban forestry agrees to bring them down, but the other one, we are going to be able to preserve it with the changes. And then uh, and then we're, one of the changes I made, which I made the, the, the unit shorter, uh, will be to the, to the depth, the width of it. But if we can go back to the presentation.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, so I'll finish it. If we can go to presentation, it's just one photo I wanna show. So this structure is extremely common uh, in that laneway uh, for other houses have done it. So our customer is not doing anything different. We're not deeper than any of the customer, any of the neighboring properties. If you can go to the next pages very quickly. So in general, we, we see that this fits the uh, the four tests of bylaw, uh, Mr. Chair and members, and respectfully request approval. Any question, I would be happy to answer. We can come back to it, no worries.
Okay, Adam Tunis?
Adam, if you've been unmuted.
Hi, sorry, no, I don't have any specific concerns. Uh, my only question was really about the offset from the laneway and whether that would be deeper than the other adjacent ones, but it sounds like it is actually, it's no different in terms of the offset from the laneway on the back.
Uh, so, sir, could we have your name and your address for the record, please, before we let you go?
Yeah, it's Adam Tunis, two one four Rush Home Road, M six H two by eight.
Okay, thank you, sir. Jennifer Motha?
Jennifer, you've been unmuted.
Yep, I'm not sure if the depth of the, of the uh, laneway suite.
Miss, Miss, Miss Motha?
Yes?
Can we have your name and your address for the record?
I am at two four five Rush Home Road. My name is Jennifer Motha.
Okay.
With respect to the ancillary and um.
So we have an echo. Do you have more than one device, huh?
Uh, yeah, two computers.
Okay, could you turn one off, please?
Sure. Um, the concern, the concern I have, still going, yeah, okay. The concern I have is I'm, I'm not sure if the height of the ancillary building and the depth has been given and it's still twice, is still quite large comparable to what's um, allowed. So I'm not sure if there is uh, dimensions given the depth and the height.
Well, if, if there's no variance with respect to depth or height, then it complies.
Uh, even if it's, if it occupies sunlight space and um, uh, other issues?
I mean, I mean.
Loss of natural light.
Even, even, even as of right, it may uh, block sunlight or whatever. I mean, but, but uh, if, if there's no variance with respect to height or depth or length, then it, it complies in, in those respects.
Okay. All right.
No, but you can express your concern about sunlight or whatever.
Well, I, that, that's, that is um, basically one, well, one of the concerns is about the loss of natural light, given the extent to which both these buildings will um, uh, be built, um, one from the rear and one from its existing position now moving back. Um, I, I know that the committee does not look at height, but uh, given that the proximity to our property, um, and already a few incidents, um, I'm really concerned about infringement.
How close, how close are you to the property?
I'm right adjacent to it.
You're two forty-five? This property's two thirty-one?
Yeah, I'm on the north side. I have the issue of um, the excavation being done without, um, I'm curious, um, where some of these variances, um, I understand, maybe this is, the committee can explain this to me. I understand that the um, the committee reviews this application, um, given that construction has not begun regard, with respect to the variances presented. Is that correct?
Well, it, it, well, we don't know whether construction's begun with respect to the variances, but presumably it hasn't.
Okay, so that's my concern because um, and maybe this is not an issue for the committee, but it's something I need to address because in the process of shoring and drilling, uh, somebody, uh, someone has um, uh, there were no permits issued and somebody came over and violated our property and are endangered the life of a, a large mature Norway maple, uh, to make space for the foundation that's still being proposed in one of the variances for the basement and the additional rear that requires variance approval. And I'm concerned about this.
Okay, well, take it up with the city building department.
Okay. Similarly, um, I'm not sure if this is uh, your issue or something that urban forestry has to deal with, because I have spoken to them about it. Um, it's not marked on the site plan for two three one. We have a, another large mature elm very close to the pool shed that we have at the rear southeast corner that um, might, depending on where this large ancillary building is going to be situated, given that it's going to go be thirteen meters or whatever it is, um, that might be uh, something that has to be looked at, uh, so that the minimal tree, uh, the minimal protection zone for the tree is not violated.
Hey, that's gonna have to take up with urban forestry.
Okay.
And they've got a condition.
Okay.
So do you have any issues with respect to the variances?
Um, I just have issues in the, in that, that I um, you know, think that um, I, rules have been broken and disregarded and I can just think that some of the variances will be exploited to some extent, given my past experience with what's been happening. That's all.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, the, the, the lady, Mrs. Moza, it indicated, I think, the, the length and the height of the ancillary building were concerns of hers. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, just so you're aware, you, I'm sure you do know this, but the second variance deals with the width of that building.
That's, what about the depth?
Not, there's nothing for depth.
Right, right. You said that to me already. Yeah, thank you.
There's a variance for width.
Yeah.
So the, the, the bylaw doesn't permit a building as wide as this one.
That's right.
So just, just to clarify, I didn't want you to think there was no variance relative to the, to the size of the suite. There is one.
Right. Yeah, that I, I get.
And just further, so drawing A fifteen actually shows the height as well and the height is roughly six meters, which um, is within the allowable height. But, but Carl's right, it's the, it's the width that uh, they need a variance for.
Okay, and the, my other question is, um, uh, the, the width is there. Where exactly on the property will this um, building be situated? I know that if they've, they've reduced the width, is it, is the um, uh, is, is the north wall gonna abut our fence or is it gonna be sat, sit, sit in the center of the property uh, on the site of two three one?
Well, it's gonna be situated where it shows on the plans. It's gonna be somewhat reduced. Uh, I don't know where they're gonna reduce it.
Right, so that's not known either. Okay.
I don't, I don't see, and maybe the applicant can tell us. I don't see it on a revised site plan.
Right.
So can you see the site plan on the screen right now? That's, that's where it's being proposed to be located and it extends almost to the two side property lines. There's a very small amount of space on the side.
They reduced the width, right? About a meter. So what she's asking is where is the meter gonna be reduced from?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Uh, we don't know.
Like, the applicant should be able to tell us.
Sure.
Okay, we'll deal with the applicant when we get to him again. Okay, Nick Hill, Chatterjee.
Three sixteen Rush Home. And um, my, my, my concerns, you know, not.
Sir, we didn't, we didn't hear uh, your name and address. So we need it for the record.
Okay, it's Nick Hill, Chatterjee. I'm from three one six Rush Home Road.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
My primary uh, comments are really related to the observation that um, that, that is happening over the last almost year at this property and maybe it's not um, absolutely related to the variances, but it's related to the lack of security, the lack of no consultation. the lack of no consultation with this, uh, with the architects or anybody with the neighbors. I've looked, I've read all of the neighbors' comments, and they are concerning, and they should be concerning. Um, I'm glad, um, that, uh, the tree management issue is being looked at, because that was another comment that I wanted to add to it. And, of course, um, the extent of the laneway construction. So, I think most of the points that I wanted to bring up have been there. The item that really I wanted to, um, give this committee a heads up is really is the lack of security that has been going on while this construction has been occurring in the absence of permits. And.
So, sir, that's not something we can deal with.
I, 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 I fully understand. I, I understand the purpose of the committee of adjustments out here. Um, but it is relevant and, and has been voiced by the other, um, by, by, by the neighbors, and I'm here primarily to support their comments.
Thank you, sir. Merrick, Merrick.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we seem to have lost contact with him. Um, I'm going to give him a call back. If you'd like, we can move on to William Wright.
What about Franco Tata?
Franco hasn't been able to connect either. I've been trying to call and, uh, send emails, and yet, no, no response. I can continue to do so, but I haven't yet to hear anything back from them.
All right, try and get those two. Let's move on to William Wright, please.
William, you've been unmuted.
I'm right here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I am William Wright, uh, at 247A Rush Home. Uh, so that's, uh, like three or four houses north of this subject property. Uh, so I object to variance number two, the request for variance number two, the width of the laneway house. It's a large laneway house, almost to the lot lines. And, yeah, even with the, uh, reduction of one meter, it's still 13 and a half meters. And, and the lot, uh, the lot width is 15 meters. So, it's almost to the lot line. There are eight mature trees, uh, there that will be, uh, uh, you know, some of them are going to be removed, some are going to be damaged and die.
Please leave your name and phone number after the beep.
Carry on, Mr. Wright.
Okay, uh, so, um, I was just observing that there are eight mature trees that will be, uh, lost, I expect, with the construction so close to them. And the, the laneway, the Bill Cameron laneway, is, is part of the, uh, 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 urban, uh, life in our neighborhood. Uh, just the, just other, uh, uh, evening at around 6:00 PM, I saw three young families, uh, walking along the lane. So, I, I object to the, the request for, uh, uh, much wider than what is normally permitted at eight meters. I think it should be kept to eight meters. And that way, uh, you know, hopefully, most of the trees will be preserved, and the quality of life along the laneway will be preserved.
Thank you, sir. Scott Fletch, Scott Fetch.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we've been unable to get Scott Fletch either. Um, I believe we have, uh, Marika Marik online.
Okay.
I, uh, live, uh, two doors, uh, up from, uh, 231 Rush Home Road, and I've observed over the year and a half since.
Can you, please, that's, we need your address and your name, not just how far you live from this property.
Oh, I thought I had mentioned. I'm at 245 Rush Home Road, oh, 247 Rush Home Road.
Okay, and your name is?
Marika Merrick, M-A-R-I-C.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Yes, I have, uh, observed in the last year and a half that, uh, when these, uh, new owners have possessed the, uh, current property, that there has been total disregard for any neighbors and properties adjoining them. And that is my main concern, plus the concern I have for item number two, for the, uh, width of the ancillary building in the back.
Okay.
Which also brings up point number one.
All right, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Tusi.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you so much. So, uh, about 80% of the concerns are, are what is not related to the variances or the meeting. So, just for the sake of saving time, I'm going to skip those, but I'll just, uh, on the record, I'll ask all the neighbors. They have my office contact information, even though that I'm not in charge of construction. I will be happy to mitigate this with, between them and the owner. They can get that information, my information, my personal information is sean, S-E-A-N, at Mimar Architects with an S at the end of Architect, or one word dot com. Please send me an email. I'll put together all your concerns, and I will pass that to the owner. Um, but now I'm going to focus on the, on, on the concerns that are relevant to the variances and the meeting we have in front of us today. And I believe the mid, like, almost all the concerns relates to the auxiliary building at the back, which I asked, um, staff to open up the presentation, and I wanted to show you the photo that I wanted to show you at the last, at, at the end of the, if you can go to, like, go forward into the pages, uh, a little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more, or this is the end of it. I think you passed it. If you could just go, like, one by one, because there is one photo, yeah, go next. Go next. Go next. Yeah, so this, so the, the photo you look at on the, on the left side is literally one of the, uh, yeah, yeah, that's where the, where the mouse is, like, I guess the staff mouse was showing on the left, is another auxiliary building in the same neighborhood. So, going, uh, auxiliary buildings and the garages, going from side to side is a very common exercise, um, that, that they would do. Some sub, some are wider, some are shorter. Um, and, and I think what we are proposing is absolutely in line with what is being approved and what's being, being built. And now, if we can go to the site plan, um, the drawings. So, we do not have any variances for the auxiliary building depth, which was a question of the neighbor at 245. We also do not have any variances for the height. If you can look at, yeah, site plan, this is a good one to keep. And then, uh, answering to where does that one meter shortage will happen? One, that, that one meter will happen on actual, towards the side of 245. So, in, in their advantage, we're going to increase the setback from whatever it is. We add another one meter. Even what it is right now is in compliance. The side yard setbacks are in compliance. So, we're going to add another meter in their benefit. And that one meter, one of the reason why we're putting all of that one meter in that side is because we want to save those trees, which addresses the other neighbors. Yes, we do have to cut some trees to accommodate that building, but obviously, uh, it is the owner's right, even if they wanted to build as of right, that, that even the, the King Charles wouldn't be able to stop them. Uh, they would cut those, will end up cut those three. So, we have to respect other people's right to be able to build a garage where they're permitted. The question is to really compare what is as of right to what we are proposing today. What we're proposing today, is it better? Is it worth? Is it going to have adverse effect on concerns? Which we believe this is actually better, because the permitted length, the built permitted depth, was we're calling it depth in this meeting, which is from the, from the lane towards the house. The permitted bylaw is 10 meter. I'll repeat, the permitted bylaw is 10 meter, but we are only seven meter. So, instead of going deep, we went wide. Why did we do that? One is to save trees. The second is to have much less adverse effect on the neighbors in terms of the shadows and view. It was much better for our client, because they will gain more landscape between the auxiliary building and, um, and the main building. And we thought it is a much better design practice. And in terms of the front and back, we're not much further, like, we're very much in line with the neighbors. And, uh, because of that, uh, I think, I think it's very common in, 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 in that area to have this kind of auxiliary building going from side to side. Uh, it's just that we're not making it any more square footage. We're just making it narrower from one side. Instead of going 10 meter deep, we just go seven meter deep. But instead of being limited on that eight meter wall, we had to stretch it. And that's what we, we achieved by talking with, uh, urban forestry and talking with the planning staff, and also our own judgments as an architect, that it's better to put that permitted a square footage, make it wider instead of deeper. And, and again, like, if this, the reason for the 247A and 247, which I believe both are living in the same house, the two of the speakers, is to support their neighbor at 245? Building this, I'll repeat this, building this as of right is going to damage the neighbors, it's going to have more damage to the neighbors than what we're proposing. So, if the goal is to support their neighbors, because I understand they're not getting affected directly themselves. And if the question of 247 was to, like, be more distance and give them space and not to be, create encroachments, that one meter extra would absolutely give them that. Like, that's a meter over by the bylaw required.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the, the speaker has reached over five minutes.
We're done, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, panel. Any questions? Yes, Carl.
Thank you. Uh, could you explain to me, is, is there four parking spaces in this ancillary suite, ancillary building?
We, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, we have to remove one with this one meter of deduction. So, we're going to end up with having three. And then, we have an access through, so we'll end up having, like, two and a half, three at most.
And what's that going to do to the elevations of the building? Because you've got two single garage doors and then a double garage door. What will you maintain? So, you're going to have three parking spaces and a suite above. Is the suite above still going to have two bedrooms? And with the three parking spaces, what's the, what's the laneway elevation?
So, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, we're going to, we're going to end up with a one-door, full-size garage. And then, the other one is going to end up being like a wider garage door, which is, would be like a one and a half. But the truth is that most of the time, we all use our garages for, like, you know, lawnmowers and bicycles and storage. So, we think what will realistically happen, we'll get two garage space for actual cars, and then we'll end up with having that, like, half for sort of like a storage of, like, lawnmowers and bicycles. So, if we look at the elevation, I can, I can sort of refer to that. Um, and, uh, and while the staff are bringing the elevations, the setback that, that we're providing is going to be on both floors, right? It's going to cut, like, ground floor and second floor together. So, we'll make the whole width smaller towards the right side.
Will it still have two bedrooms?
Uh, yes, we're going to try to work out the square footage to most likely just, just incorporate two bedrooms. But they're going to end up being a smaller, because we're making it a meter shorter. Yeah, so, instead of now having this, we're going to have a single garage, and then we'll end up having, like, a double.
So, in terms of what you're trying to accommodate, um, is it, there's a concern with the width of the, of the ancillary building. And, and I, I was looking at it as four parking spaces, and you say now there's going to be three. Uh, but you think actually there's really only going to be two usable ones. Does that not mean that the building actually could be considerably shorter and that you could provide just two parking spaces on the bottom and a one-bedroom unit on the top, which is frankly much more in keeping with what laneway suites are normally built like?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, like, making it, making it, well, there, there, there are two things. One is that, I mean, two and a half garage for a house this size and in that neighborhood, we think is very, like, normal. I mean, the house would probably worth about 10 million by the time it's finished. There's no intention to sell. They, they're planning to live in it. But I'm just trying to reference is that typically, the bigger the houses, the more expensive are. You would want to offer more garage for the customers. So, I think in terms of, like, numbers, is it one car garage or two car garage? We don't think it is too much to ask. The second is that we think the variance, like, we're not, we're not asking for extra, like, GFA for the auxiliary building. The bylaw acknowledges that, like, bigger houses need bigger, like, auxiliary building, and that's why it permits 10 meter deep. It is just that we are changing, instead of having a, like, a square sitting at the corner, which would create a dead space, you know, on the north of it. Like, that one meter is typically, is probably going to be just walking a space. There's not enough to do anything. And if we would make it square to make it in compliance, uh, we would, we could, we would made it like eight meter wide, which is the limit, and then we could make it, like, 10 meter depth. So, would it still be the same size? It's just that it would be much uglier and would have a negative impact. So, what we're, we're asking is not your permission to make this really bigger. It just have a permission to make it rectangular instead of a square. And, um, and, and that, like, we're not asking for extra, in, in a variance, we're not asking extra square footage for the, the, the apartment. There is no request for extra square footage for the garage space. It's really, the discussion is the shape. Like, as, if as a right is a, is a giant square at the corner, which in my opinion will have more adverse effect on everyone versus having a, like, a narrower rectangle, which is sort of go from, from side to side with one meter setback from the tree and from the concerned neighbor. Um, so, so because of that, I, I believe this variance version has less adverse effect than the as of right. And it sort of makes, keeps everybody, I guess, happy in a sense that the, the customer can accommodate, we can redesign it, they're happy with the two and a half car. Um, and, and the neighbors get their setback, they're asking, and, and we're not asking for any extra height. And I show you a sample, it's sort of common in that lane. Maybe, like, maybe it's not common in other streets, but in this laneway, it's common to go from, like, side to side, from property lines.
Can I just poke a little bit at that? Uh, variance number four, um, contemplates a total floor area for all ancillary buildings at 60 meter square. You're asking for 102. You said, as of right, you can build the same square footage in a different configuration?
No, well, the as of right, in terms of the width, we, we could go eight meters.
I get that, but, but I.
And then, the depth could be 10 meters.
But you'd still have, need a variance for, um, total floor area.
The, the, actually, yeah, yeah, I think, so, so let me, um, let me see how I could, uh, there is no limit.
In the, they, they look again at the, at the previous public notice that we, we have drawn.
Oh, I, yeah, but just, I have my, my colleague here, and I, I believe you're looking at a previous, uh, previous, uh, notice that was sent to public, and it was a mistake by, by the building city, building department. There is no, like, the variance you're reading, it just doesn't exist. There is no limit on the, uh, on the actual, uh, square footage. Like, we could build eight meter wide and 10 meter deep, uh, the, the entire thing, and go six meter height, and that's exactly as of right. Like, they could build that.
So, now you've got us in a bit of a quandary. We've got a variance in front of us uh, that you're saying, you're saying is wrong.
No, no, well, there is a revised notice sent to the public. So, in terms of complying with the Planning Act, I believe we're, 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 we're very good positioned. That's why the, the meeting was adjourned and pushed back, and the revised notice was sent. Sorry, not pushed back, the revised notice was sent. But I'm not sure the document you have in front of you is the, is the revised variance or not. But what was sent to the public is the actual revised.
Can we get Sabrina's?
Yeah, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I'm just double checking now, okay? Just give me one second.
Okay.
And the applicant, you're, you're, I'm now not clear what you think the bylaw says. What do you think it says relative to the total floor area? You think it doesn't deal with that? Is that correct?
I think that's what he said, Carl.
All right, yeah, I was, I was mute. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair.
Because I'm having the same problem as Larry. I don't understand your as of right. It seems to me that, it seems to me that if the width was reduced, you, you'd still have trouble, because there is a control on the amount of floor area you can have.
No, that's.
There is no, Mr. Chair, that was a mistake by the city. Can I ask, just to validate, uh, your documents that you're looking at, the list of variance? If you go to the title of it, it should say.
Sorry, through, through you, Mr. Chair, can, this is the Deputy Secretary Treasurer. Let me interject here, so I can look. tell you on the revised public hearing notice. Variance number one was amended to be eighty one percent, three hundred and twenty six point four square meters. So that's correct. Variance number two has been amended to read thirteen point six two today by the agent. Variance number three has been eliminated today by the agent. Variance number four, so Will, if you could just scroll down on the screen. So everyone can see what I'm referring to, just keep scrolling to four. The height is twelve point six seven meters for the dwelling.
Oh.
Four, four deals doesn't deal with height.
Right, so four, four has been eliminated as per the revision. Then five is the height. Six is the FSI. Seven is the height, but there is a, a variance for the ma, the rear exterior main wall height. Seven point five is permitted. And ten point two eight meters is being requested.
That's for the house.
That's for the house. Yeah.
So is six, sixty square meters? Does that mean that the ancillary building before us doesn't exceed sixty square meters?
No, it means that, that, that the, uh, that's not a requirement.
Well, that, that's what was removed as part of the revision.
But what does? So, but, but doesn't the bylaw still sit with sixty square meters? So if he's over sixty square meters, he would need a variance and the fact that it's being removed means that he's at sixty square meters or less. Is that correct?
Based on what the, based on what the zoning examiner has submitted and that's, that was received on November the thirtieth, twenty twenty two. It's not showing that variance.
I think what the applicant is, is postulating is that there is no FSI uh, limit on a, on a laneway suite, which surprises me.
That is correct, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it is through you, Mr. Chair. There, there is no, it was a mistake done by, 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 by the city, which they fixed it by sending a revised notice. Unfortunately, what is on the screen, which I'm guessing that's what you and the rest of the members are looking at it, is the original mistaken list that was sent to the public. So, but this is, this is my point is that we, like if for any reason we were not in compliant, like if it was a variance, you would have it in front of you because this was sent. Like the latest one, the latest revised one that was sent by the zoning examiner, they fixed their mistake. So that's why they removed that because they did a mistake, they fixed it. So that means, uh, if that was an issue on top of the widths, you would see an additional variance for the minimum requirement of square footage for the auxiliary building, right? But you're not like, like the revised one that is correct one that is sent to neighbors, that is um, that is sent to us, um.
We, we understand that mistake, Mr. Tusi, we, we have a lot more uh, things to get through. We understand that's not an issue anymore. Whether it's because you comply or because there is no uh, requirement, it doesn't matter to us cause not a variance before us.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, just point of clarification, the, the original submission came in on a waiver form. And, and that is what was noted on the waiver form. And then, uh, and then a zoning review was submitted, uh, again, November thirtieth of twenty twenty two. And it's, and I'm looking at the zoning review right now and it's not stated here. So again, we run into a situation where at the, if committee is to approve and it becomes final and binding, that through the building permit stage, if an additional variance is required, they'll have to submit a new application to committee.
We're fine with that. We're fine with that. If should the committee decide to approve, we're fine. We do totally understand and we're, we're okay with it.
So anything we approve has to be for a amended there, uh, list of variances. Okay, so let us go into committee and, uh, let's have your comments or your motion.
I'll go first. Um, uh, overall, I don't have any real problems with the, the main dwelling. I think these are large lots. Um, there is ample room, uh, to accommodate the extension to the side and the back. I think it, you know, there are large homes on that stretch. I don't think the variances with respect to the main dwelling are excessive. Uh, I will say I do have a little bit of an issue with the width, uh, of the proposed laneway suite. Um, I, I, I take the applicant's point that, you know, there may be an opportunity if it was, um, compliant with the width that he'd come forward, uh, somewhat. Um, but I'm not even sure whether the, uh, reduction in width satisfies forestry's concerns about the trees. You know, forestry had recommended refusal. Um, we haven't heard from them whether this reduction would in fact satisfy those concerns. I just think that the width is, uh, excessive. Uh, and I appreciate there may be dwellings on the lane or elsewhere that are like this, but I, my view is like, those, those are likely pre, uh, pre bylaws, uh, pre laneway suite or garden suite bylaws. So, um, I, um, I'm having difficulty with the, with the, uh, proposed width of the laneway suite.
I'm having the same problem. I, I, it, it doesn't seem to me that what we have before us is a laneway suite is what was anticipated when laneway suites were first, um, were first contemplated. Um, four cars and a double, a, a double bedroom, uh, apartment above uh, seems to me to be, um, overbuilding to a certain extent with regard to the lane suite. Like, like Larry, I have no trouble with the main building, but I, 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 I can't support the laneway suite as it is before us. I, I think it does in fact impose a number of concerns. If the applicant's correct, um, and there's no gross floor area, I, I would agree with him that making it squarer, um, might pose certain problems, but making it square would also take the proper, take the building away from the trees, which is the very concern that the plant, that the forestry department has. So um, at this point, I can't support the laneway, uh, component of the application.
So I, I, I think that the applicant is correct in that most of the laneway suites or garages with, that we deal with our, uh, prop, uh, property line to property line. Uh, and reducing the depth is a, uh, is one way to deal with it. Uh, because it's, it's greater and, and I think we've had someone say, uh, uh, I, I, I don't even know whether it was an applicant or it was some of the people from the city that we took training from, where they said, you know, you reduce the, the width of, uh, of the garage or the laneway suite or something, he end up with useless space, uh, between the property line and, and the building. And, uh, it's, it's a, it's just collects junk or whatever. It's not a very useful space. So, uh, I, I, and this happens to be probably a little wider lot than we usually deal with when we deal with laneway houses, because they're usually on, on smaller properties with smaller uh, houses. So I, I, I could support this application. Adam, what do you think?
I'm trying to, I, I like the form and the massing, but I'm not very sure about the design that can, that have to, uh, remove two healthy trees. So I'm happy to support this motion only if these two trees can be preserved. But I'm not sure if that's possible. I think the build, the, the, the building will have to be offset even further. And usually they look at the, um, based on my experience, they look at at least the tree canopy diameter projected on the ground and that's probably the protective zone for hurting the, the roots, right? In that case, basically, what it means is there shouldn't be any ancillary building at the backyard if we don't damage these trees. Alright, so I don't think the, the GFA, the form, the space, uh, will have any help on this, uh, recommendation from Toronto Forestry. So I think to me, the decision is more about providing an extra unit with two bedrooms or keeping the trees. This is a very difficult, um, position.
So you don't think there could be a laneway suite at all?
Because of the trees.
The trees.
Yeah, I mean, unless we are ready to, uh, override the recommendation from Toronto Forestry and say, okay, we can remove these trees at in lieu of some fees or grow six more trees somewhere else in the city. And have this, uh, unit. I mean, I agree with you that I, I tend to believe that having those set back on the side in an urban setting for a building at the back doesn't make sense. Should be building from face to face and form a largest courtyard in the middle. But, um, in this very particular situation, I don't know if this, uh, auxiliary building is appropriate. Just keep it open with trees or another unit.
So Chair, to move this along, I'm going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Uh, I will move to refuse, uh, variances one to four. Uh, but approve variances five to seven.
Uh, one to four of the revised application.
Oh, yeah, it's a good point. Uh.
Through you, Mr. Chair, Will's just going to present the revised notice that was sent out to the residents, just so we can get the correct
Okay.
Uh, variances.
Just so everyone can see, the, uh, variances on the left is what was sent in the revised notice. And what is on the right is what was, um, uh, sent to, uh, or rather drafted originally and superseded.
Uh, okay, well, you're gonna have to forgive me that. That's pretty tiny.
Sorry about it. It's, um, there we go.
So what? The ones, the ones you're having trouble with Larry are two. Um.
Well, it would be number one.
Number one, two, yeah.
Number two. Number three was removed. And then if you just scroll down, Will, I think that's it. So number one, two, three. Dealing with the ancillary building.
Okay.
Okay, I'd, I'd, I'd second that motion.
So I just want to say.
Wait a minute, we don't have the motion right yet.
Yeah.
I know what he's doing though.
One, two, and three are refused. And four, five, and six.
And what about seven?
Yeah.
That's the house.
That's the house. Yeah.
Yeah, the house. So, so the, the ones related to the ancillary building are refused. The ones related to the house are approved.
So one, two, three, refused, four, five, six, seven are approved.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do we have a second there, Carl?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, the, uh, the application, uh, is, uh, approved except for, uh, variances number one to three, one, two, and three. Number thirty five, three Welby Circle. Gonna give me a second here while I clean up my, uh. Okay. Purpose of this application is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with an integral garage, a front covered porch, two front second story balconies, a side basement walkout, and to install a new roof over the existing rear deck. Uh, with this application, uh, we have the following documentation, um, material submitted by the applicant, uh, email correspondence from planning and Ravine and Natural Features Forestry, uh, staff reports from, uh, Urban Forestry, uh, and uh, Toronto and Region Conservation Authority. Uh, we have one form letter and support. Uh, and we have correspondence in opposition from one oh three Parkview Hill and two Welby Circle.
Uh, Leo Mastandrea. Everyone. My name is Leo Mastandrea. I'm the agent for the owners at, uh, three Welby.
We need your address, Mr. Mastandrea.
Uh, eight one seven Cosburn Avenue.
Okay. All right, so we have a potential op, uh, opposition person and you have a lot of variances. So you better tell us what this is about.
Mr. Chairman, could, could, could he also clarify, is, is this, this is not a complete rebuild, right? He's made, just, could he clarify that he's maintaining some of them?
So I told the examiner just to do it as a new because that was the worst case in case, because it was like borderlining fifty percent. So it's really a renovation. But because of the fifty percent, uh, zoning bylaw rule, it's considered a new house. That we're removing potentially more than fifty percent of the existing walls, but essentially it's an addition.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So essentially, um, we're here today, as you, as you mentioned, um, we have support from the adjacent neighbor. Um, and we also spoke to the other neighbor who's in opposition and, um, during our conversations, they, he basically said that, um, he'd like us to remove the front balcony to the west. And he had concerns regarding the windows on our west wall. So I agreed to, uh, to address his concerns at that time. And so that's why I'd like to make a revision to our application and just, um, take a look at the variances that we have before us. And we'd like to actually remove number three. Variance number three, where it says maximum permitted platforms above second story is one and we have two. We're going to remove that completely to address his concerns. And in addition to that, number four would, would be revised because now we, we don't have two decks, we only have one. And it's the smaller number five, four point five four that remains out of that, um, number four. So we're reducing to address his concerns. Um, I also sent you some decisions which have similar heights. And, um, in speaking to the front yard setback, it's existing as we speak today. Um, so we're not coming any closer. It's just basically existing where it is right now. Um, and the side yard setback, we have a little nib wall to, to carry our platform. But we're gonna, it's gonna be open, so you'll be able to walk through it. Um, the number eight, the rear deck is existing. It's an existing situation. It's a concrete, um, deck that we're keeping. And, um, the platforms are basically technical. And, and three of the bylaws are actually repeated. So, um, as you said, we have, um, um, no concerns from any of the city staff, including community planning, forestry, ravine natural feature protection. And we also have approval from TRCA and we do agree to all their conditions. So basically, um, um, it is my submission that we do comply with the four tests of the planning act and I feel that this is appropriate. And in addition, we have a very large and unique lot with an irregular shape. So it was very difficult to try to comply with some of these zoning bylaws. And, um, basically, I think, um, that's all I need to say. If you have any questions.
Carl.
Could you clarify the, uh, on the proposed second floor plan, the balcony that you're removing is, it's the one on the west?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
The one in the west is the bigger one, which we're removing completely to address the neighbor's concerns. And, and.
Okay, Sonia Penzo.
Sonia, you've been unmuted.
Hi, my name is Sonia Penzo and I live at ninety four A Parkview Hill Crescent.
All right, thank you. Please go ahead.
So we had a, a landslide in the backyard at ninety six and ninety eight Parkview Hill a few years ago. Um, and the neighbor at ninety eight lost approximately. Um, and the neighbor at ninety-eight lost approximately about thirty, thirty to forty percent of her backyard, uh collapsed down the ravine and the neighbor at ninety-six lost maybe about twenty-five percent of his backyard down the ravine. So Toronto Ravine Authority have been working with us for several years now with a with a plan, uh generously, a plan to try to save our our houses. Um, we have had numerous studies done and there's sort of no doubt at this point that at some point our houses are going to collapse. Uh, or at least parts of our yards will collapse, if not, some of us will lose our structures. So my concern really was number twelve on the requests. Um, it sort of indicates that there is conversation with the Ravine Authority, but all it says is a minimum of ten meters back from the shoreline hazard. Uh, this dwelling will be stepped back zero meters from the shoreline hazard. And uh we're just really concerned as neighbors about the stability of our backyards. There was, I believe, supposed to be construction beginning uh uh this fall, which has now been pushed back to the spring to build case on walls through uh several of our backyards. We haven't heard where that entry point is because they're gonna have to find an entry between some of our houses to get there. And so this construction makes me nervous in terms of, A, the um the stability of the the drilling and the foundation being put in, um but also just the size and the scope of the house in terms of how it will uh interfere with the 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 land and and how unstable we currently are.
Right, uh so um how close is this property to uh your property?
I live three doors over, but we do kind of curve. Um, and uh we're really close knit. Um, we've also each lost some trees in the last couple of years because of the slope stability. Um, and our our backyards and fences are starting to fall down the hill, so we've lost our back fence. Uh, I have small children, so that was a bit of a problem, we had to ninja something back together. Our neighbors next door at ninety-four, which is two doors down or three doors down, their backyard is sort of uh turned into a bit of a sippy hole, so they now are are uh caving in in their yard. Um, and then there was a huge tree because of the slope instability that fell down between number one and number two Wellby, which is just next door. Um, and the Ravine Authority has said that in part, as the the ground is so in motion, um, that 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 huge tree came down. So I just have concerns about large equipment coming in, even the demolition of the existing house, um, that it will create ins- more instability when we already have instability.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mastandrea?
Leo, you've been unmuted.
Hi, um, yes, so um we're very familiar with the um slope stabilization project. Actually, we uh are part of it, we signed the agreement. Um, but in addition, but when we submitted for zoning, we also submitted to PRCA right away because we wanted to get their blessing first. So we had to go back and forth before we even submitted for zoning. So this has been a long haul for us, we started this project back in uh two thousand twenty-one, in July, actually. So it's been a long haul, we've talked to all the staff and no one has any concerns. Um, TRCA um recommends uh supports our application, so essentially, um, I, and also too, we have a very large lot. If you look at the map, our lot is probably, I don't know. But it's big, it's over uh, the total lot is over three thousand square meters and the tabled land is over a thousand square meters. So where we're building is all on ta- stable ground. And we have another hundred meters basically to where the ravine starts on our property in certain locations, but in other locations it is closer and that's why we kept revising our our drawings to deal with forestry. So we've been in close contact with all staff and that's why we have all positive reports.
So are you using the footprint of this, of the existing house and not doing excavation?
No, no, we are doing excavation, but it's on flat land, tabled land, totally tabled land.
So it's not near the uh tabletop or not near the, not near the?
No, and most of it's existing, so we're just kind of filling in and doing some architectural um features just to, you know, as per the client's request.
Okay.
Some articulation which planning wanted, so we, like I said, we've been dealing with all the departments from day one before we came to committee, just to alleviate all these issues. And we also tried to talk to the neighbors as well. We also have two verbal supports from number uh, so we have the support letter from our neighbor to the uh east and we have the also verbal from the next two houses over.
So where is the existing house in relation to the stable top of bank?
Well, see that, um, see the existing concrete porch, if you pull up my uh site plan, A A one, um, I can show you, yeah, that one, just if you blow it up. See the existing porch to the left?
Yeah.
So with the stairs coming down, that's existing, it's an existing concrete porch, which we're not touching. That's existing and and it's very close to the top of bank, that's why we were going back and forth with TRCA to address, because additionally, originally we were gonna build on top of it, but they didn't want us to, so we did it. And that's why our addition is on the side, so that other, the darker, the darker hatching is the proposed. The rest is existing.
Okay, so you're you're, where you're actually excavating and building looks like it's ten.
It's over ten meters uh uh top of bank.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yes, Carl?
Mister Chairman, Leo, you might have mentioned this already, but are you aware of the planning department recommended conditions?
Yes, and we agree with all those conditions, they're pretty straightforward.
Bird-friendly glass and lights and all that?
Yes, we're we're totally in agreement with that.
Okay, thank you, let us go on to committee. Comments or uh a motion? Larry?
Sure, um, I uh I I wasn't aware of uh some of the instability along the um ravine that overlooks the DVP, um, I I guess it's not surprising, um, but I it it's, you know, if if this proposal um has TRCA and ravine's uh approval, uh I guess they're satisfied that uh there isn't uh a risk um perhaps that some of the others uh on the adjoining street might have. So um and we do have uh TRCA approval, so uh I thought this was a a pretty good uh proposal, it was a good uh reuse. I think the variances before us are uh overall um uh fairly minor. Um, you know, the proposal uh doesn't uh go back any further than it was previously. I think the design is uh is quite attractive and will fit in well with some of the newer builds in the area. Um, I uh uh the fact that they've reduced or eliminated the balcony, I think is a good thing to satisfy the neighbors' concerns. Uh, overall, I think it's a supportable application. Um, I would like to move approval subject to forestry conditions two and three uh and the planning conditions uh contained in their email.
Okay, we have a second there? Aaron, all in favor? Have your approval, sir, thank you. Number thirty-six, four twelve Delaware Avenue. Purpose of the application is to convert the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling from a triplex into a duplex by constructing a rear second-story addition and to extend the front veranda. Uh, with this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. Uh, Peter Kerfirst?
Through you, Mister Chair, we're in the middle of calling Peter Kerfirst, he had picked up moment, like a couple moments ago, so I'm hoping he'll pick up again, just give me a couple seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Peter?
Here? Hello?
Hello, Mister Kerfirst. We're having trouble hearing you. Hello?
And we lost him. Through you, Mister Chair, maybe we move on to the next one and I'll try to contact him one more time.
Okay, item thirty-seven. Twenty-eight Salem Avenue, purpose of the application to convert the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling into a triplex consisting of three residential dwelling units, also to reconstruct rear additions on the second and third levels and to construct a rear third-story balcony. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, a staff report from planning and correspondence of concern from thirty-five Salem Avenue. Mister Galbraith?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, we're glad we got a good connection with you. Okay, so can we have your name and your address, please?
Sean Galbraith, planner here on behalf of the application, eighteen King Street East, Suite fourteen hundred Toronto.
Okay, so do you have anything to, you wanna tell the uh panel before we go into committee?
I think this is a pretty straightforward sort of partial third-floor top-up to make a little triplex. I think it's very supportable.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any questions? Yes, Larry?
Uh, Sean, what's the treatment of the balcony off the back?
The treatment?
He means privacy, et cetera.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, it's a, it's an inset within the the square, the the footprint of the building. We don't usually put privacy screens on those on the sides. Um, but if if one is desired by the committee, I'm sure it would be no problem.
Well, I'm just looking at the side elevation and it looks like there's part of that balcony is exposed, what drawing have I got here? A four oh one?
Four oh one, let me see, I'm way out here. Uh, yeah, so that would be beyond the rear wall of the third, it's the, it's inset within the the footprint of the second floor. It's sort of a typical, that sort of notch design.
Yeah, I get that, uh, I I just think maybe on the sides, it might not be a bad idea to uh put some privacy screening on that portion of it.
Yeah, I'm sure a six-foot privacy screen on on the sides would be fine.
Great, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion? Larry?
Through you, Mister Chair, there is one speaker in opposition, uh Jason Ang.
Oh.
Oh, well, we didn't know about that. Okay, let's hear from him. What's the person's, what's this person's name?
Jason at thirty-nine Salem.
Okay.
Hi, uh, just I have a concern about the height of the.
All right, Jason, Jason, we need your name and your address for the record, please.
Yeah, it's Jason at thirty-nine Salem.
Yeah, what's your last name, sir?
Ang, A N G.
Thank you.
Thanks, um, just a a concern about the height of the uh the proposed uh house. Um, just concerned because our front room there has got very little light to begin with and in the afternoons and uh just the height, I have a feeling that it's just not gonna get much light at all and that room is already three degrees cooler because of uh poor insulation, so uh that's the concern that we have, uh other than that, you know, everything else looks fine.
I don't see any variance for height, sir. So it may be that they're building height as of right, which case we.
There's no variance on that, you're saying?
That doesn't look like it, I don't think so.
All right, that's fine then, if there's, if the height is is remaining the same, then I I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Am I correct, Mister Galbraith?
We're actually a little bit, now I'm unmuted, yes, we are below the uh the, we're less than the the height permissions of the zone.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna clarify to that neighbor, it it's not, there's there's still change of height, but still within the bylaw limits.
Yeah.
I I didn't catch his ad- address, um. I thought he said.
Thirty-nine, I think.
Which would be on the other side of the street, so there's certainly no shadow impact, I I don't believe, that far away.
I think it was thirty-nine.
That that's what I heard as well.
Yeah, I think that's what I heard.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think there should be any impact on shadow on on the other side of the street.
Well, sometimes people are concerned anyhow.
Hello?
Uh, fair enough, shadow impact, I should say, the concern can be there.
Yeah, okay, all right, panel, do we have a um comments, a motion, Larry?
Yeah, sure, I I assume, Sean, you've seen the TTC report?
Yes, it's uh standard conditions, it's fine.
Okay, uh, so I think this is a reasonable proposal, it's it's uh, you know, within steps of Blair Street, uh, you know, introducing additional rental accommodation on this stretch is good. I think the variances themselves are quite minor, uh, I think it's an appropriate development for this site and for this street and for this neighborhood. Uh, I'd like to move approval of this application subject to uh the TTC report, uh conditions in the TTC report and also screening on both sides of the third-story uh balcony, privacy screening.
One point five meters.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you second that, Carl?
Yes, I just, I just like to note that I think that the the design solution is very well done. Um, there's been an expansion of the front of the building in a way that I don't think negatively impacts the attached semi and I think that's rather well done.
Okay, good, all in favor? All right, you have your approval, sir. Uh, can we go back to number thirty-six, Delaware Avenue?
Through you, Mister Chair, I think we have hold of Peter.
Okay, good.
Yes, sign here. Yes, good evening, Mister Chair and committee members.
Can we have your name and address, Mister Kerfirst?
Yes. Yes, it's Peter Kerfirst, sixty-eight Whistlepost Street, Toronto, Ontario, M four E three W eight.
Okay, so two, two small uh variances, I don't think we need a presentation. Is there anything you wanna say to the panel before we go into committee?
Um, not really, I think just just the fact that it didn't really show on the on the drawings that actually, in actuality, there is already a rear uh single-story addition that we're building the second story on top of, so in essence, we're rebuilding the existing ground floor rear and staying within that footprint just a little bit off with that post. And in the front, in actuality, we're just rebuilding that one section of the front veranda, which was existing prior to her moving back in due to financial conditions, so her son has to basically move to the basement now, so they're converting from a triplex back to a duplex um due to due to economic conditions.
Okay, thank you.
That's pretty much it.
All right, panel, any questions or do we have a motion? Carl?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, I'm pleased to move approval of this application, I think it's a, it's a very minor application and it um it reflects well on the adjacent properties, the property at four fourteen extends further back than this one does. Um, the addition is modest and I think it fits in comfortably with the community, um, so I'd like to move approval without condition.
All right, second there, Aaron? Okay, all in favor? Have your approval, thank you, sir. Number thirty-eight, six eighty-six A Gerard Street East. Okay. So the purpose of this application is to reconstruct the front porch, platform, stairs, and canopy to the existing mixed-use building. Uh, with this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, a letter in support from Paula Fletcher, counselor, and eight form letters in support from properties on Gerard Street East and Simpson Avenue and another two, another letter from two properties on Gerard Street East. Uh, with this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, a letter in support from Paula Fletcher, councillor, and eight form letters in support from properties on Gerard Street East and Simpson Avenue, and another two, another letter from two properties on Gerard Street East. Uh, Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Yes, can we have your name and address, sir, for the record?
Yes, it's Robert Reed. It's fifty-two Riverdale Avenue in Toronto.
Okay, so this is, uh, appears to be a relatively straightforward application. Uh, we're going to take, I don't think we need a presentation, but, uh, do you have anything to say to the panel before we go into committee?
No, it's very straightforward and I outlined everything. The, a, um, uh, we were required to submit for minor variance because the OBC and the zoning conflict with each other, and we can't have one without the other. Uh, so it's really just, we're just replacing an existing stair and we fall behind the property line. There's no conflicts with adjacent properties at all. It's very straightforward.
All right, thank you. All right, panel, any questions or do we have a motion? Yes, Aaron?
I will have a motion to approve the application. It's very straightforward and simple, doesn't affect a neighbor, is correcting the, meeting the OBC requirement.
Okay, Carl, you second that motion? All right, all in favor? Have your approval, sir, thank you. Number thirty-nine, two thirty-six Queensdale Avenue. The purpose of this application to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a complete second-story addition, a front porch and a rear ground floor deck with stairs. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. Uh, Mr. Yari?
Hello.
Yes.
This is Eli Yarhi, I'm the homeowner at two thirty-six Queensdale Avenue.
Would you please speak up and, and, uh, give us that information again, because we really couldn't hear you?
Sorry, uh, this is Eli Yarhi, homeowner at two thirty-six Queensdale Avenue.
Yes, that's much better. Now, uh, you're asking for a deferral?
Unfortunately, I was not able to get the sign printed in time and posted, uh, despite best efforts. Um, Staples was not able to deliver on time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, panel, do we have a motion for a deferral? Larry?
Uh, sure, Chair, I, poor Staples. Um, uh, that is unfortunate. Uh, uh, given the circumstances and the fact that signage wasn't, uh, provided appropriately, uh, I'll move deferral.
Thank you. Seconder, Carl, all in favor? You have your deferral, sir, thank you. Number forty, uh, ninety Doucens Street. The purpose of this application to legalize and to maintain the rear one-story addition with second and third-story decks, as well as a rear yard canopy attached to the detached garage that were built without the benefit of a building permit. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, and we have three form letters. Three form letters in support from properties on Rush Home Road. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Okay, can we have your name and address, please?
My name is Jason Rodriguez from Interarc Inc. at, uh, one three five one Dundas Street West in the city of Toronto.
Okay, uh, I think, I think, uh, could you tell us why this, uh, was built without a building permit?
Uh, the canopy that covers the carport, uh, the rear one-story basement addition and, uh, the small addition to the third-floor dormer are all construction, which were built, uh, more than fifteen years ago. There's an old order that was on the file that was in front of the Ontario Superior Court, and then City of Toronto withdrew the charges back in twenty twelve, I believe. Um, the order was then subsequently reissued in twenty twenty-two. So now we've gone through the process of going through a zoning application and a committee adjustment, uh, minor variance request to maintain the construction.
So is this all before your client purchased the property?
Uh, no.
But before he hired the ARC Act, right?
Yeah, yes, correct.
Okay, all right, panel, any questions or, uh, Larry?
Just a quick question. I, I, I'm just looking at the view from the laneway and it looks like, so this is semi, right?
Correct.
Uh, and it looks like the rear sort of balconies and addition, um, in your adjacent semi mirror those in yours that you're seeking approval for?
Correct. We were involved in the other side of the semi. Um, the owner, um, at number ninety is also, uh, one of the own, is the owner of eighty-eight, one of the owners at number ninety is one, is the owner of eighty-eight.
So do they need the same?
They have already gone through the committee for approval. Um, there's applications, uh, at the committee for number eighty-eight Doucens in twenty fifteen and twenty eighteen.
Okay, so they've already got what you're actually asked, just simply asking for?
Well, with respect to the rear, uh, one-story, uh, basement addition and the, and, um, that, correct, they, they already have it. Um, the, what's in front of the committee with respect to this application, um, also pertains to the covered carport, which attaches the existing lawful garage to the house, which creates some variances with respect to, um, the, the west, western, uh, side lot line and the rear lot line.
Right, got it.
So the, the property, the, the rear yard of this property, it appears is paved, um, on.
Correct.
On number eighty-eight, is that also true or is, is there landscaping or?
No, there's some landscaping on number eighty-eight. Number eighty-eight also has a side yard that which was a, abuts the lane. It's got a bigger rear yard than, than number ninety does.
The, the, the question that I'm leading to is what is the possibility of, if you pull up the proposed site plan, of having the area that's beside the one-story addition, which says it is existing hardscape, what are the, what are the opportunities for having that removed with, uh, grass or some other kind of softscape?
Uh, if, if the commit, like, we could provide that area that is back there, that two point six eight meters by four point one six eight meters, if that area that is existing hardscape is converted to soft landscaping, that'll provide an area that is greater than what is required by the bylaw and that variance would no longer be required, should the committee not wish to grant the variance for the.
What do you think of that? I think that's a really good solution.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree, Carl.
So could we, could, I, I'm, I, based on that, I'm going to move that that, that variance be not approved, but do you want to remove it ahead of time?
Yeah, we could, we could remove, um, the soft landscaping variance if that's, uh.
That's number four, correct?
Number four, correct.
Just to keep in mind that this is construction that's been in place for a very long time, and the neighbors that are directly affected by this construction, both to the west, the two, the semis to the west that are on Rush Home Road and the, the detached house at two nineteen Rush Home Road, which backs, which the rear lot line backs onto, have all signed letters of, uh, support.
The issue here, though, I think, is one with percolation of water. Uh, it's a, it's a large issue all over the city. Um, we are rather loathe to, well, I actually, I don't know that I've been on a committee that's approved anything with zero percent, um, soft landscaping. Um, and I, I would hate to have, to, to, to suggest that this is exactly what you would have done, because that's why I probed with the question about landscaping. I think your suggestion of removing, or my pushing you to suggest removing variance number four is reasonable and makes this an acceptable application.
Okay, let's see. It, I just wanted the committee to be aware that it's been like that for over fifteen years.
Yeah, fair enough.
Was that a motion, Carl?
Yeah, um, I, I would like, so do we assume that variance number four is removed?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, then on that basis, I'd like to, um, uh, uh, bring forth a motion of approval to the application without condition.
The amended application.
Amended application, pardon me, yes.
All right, Larry, you second that, all in favor? Have your approval, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Number forty-one. Uh, seventy-four Mathers Field Drive. Uh, the purpose of this application is to, uh, construct an in-ground pool in the rear yard of the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. We have email correspondence from Heritage Planning, and we have correspondence and concern or interest from seventy and seventy-two Mathers Field. Uh, Mr. Bartolini?
Hello, members of committee.
Hello.
My name is Anthony Bartolini and I'm representing my client from seventy-four Mathers Field Drive today.
Okay, uh, can we have your address?
Uh, it's one two zero four Hill Street in Innisville.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I don't think we need a, a, a presentation. Uh, do you have, uh, anything you want to say before, to the panel before we take it into, uh, committee?
Uh, just through you, Mr. Chair, uh, as a question from our team, uh, after reviewing the file, uh, a little bit further, uh, before our hearing today, um, we, we noticed and would like clarification on, um, it seems as if there was maybe a variance, um, missed for the, uh, request of, uh, forty-three percent, uh, soft landscaping in the rear yard. Um, I'm not sure if that was actually missed on the staff report or, uh, if that's a variance that's actually being, uh, requested today, uh, but from my understanding, I don't believe it is.
We don't have that in front of us.
Okay, so, um, it, again, it was something that was only brought to my attention, you know, uh, prior to the hearing today. Um, I did want to kind of briefly discuss our options, uh, in that sense. Um, I do know that the application is listed on, uh, the public files, uh, that are in front of us today. Uh, one of the requests was for the soft landscaping, so I'm just, I would like to get, uh, you, you know, uh, an opinion, I guess, from, uh, council on how to move forward.
Okay, Sabrina is.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm just looking at the zoning review that was submitted for this application, and there's only the one variance listed that is on the screen.
So.
Was this, was this something missed by the zoning examiner then?
Mr. Bartolini?
Um, I'm not too sure if I could speak on behalf of the zoning examiner. Um, I do have the application in front of me here. I'm not sure if I have the actual, uh, the, the Z, are you referring to the zoning certificate, uh, the ZZC?
Yes.
Uh, that one does list only one variant, uh, but I'm not sure how that corresponds in relation to our actual application that was submitted. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if that's the staff report for today's hearing, or if that was just a zoning certificate completed during the, um, pool permit or, uh, fence enclosure review process, um, prior.
So.
But in any case, in any case, the notice went out, did not have the variance with respect to forty percent, three percent of soft landscaping, so, uh, seems to me the best thing we could do is defer the matter so we can get that straightened out and a proper notice be sent. Otherwise, you're going to run into problems later on.
Uh, I, to me, Mr. Chair, I agree, I, I do agree. Um, I mean, if you guys do want to give any opinion or we do want to have the discussion with the neighbors in concern, uh, now, that, if that's an option, that would be fine as well, and then we can come to.
There's nobody, but doesn't matter, uh, if you had one or two, there are no neighbors, uh, to speak, and even if you had one or two of them, that doesn't mean you wouldn't have four or five others that were concerned about it if the proper notice went out. So I think, uh, that's subject to what the panel thinks. This is a matter that should be deferred.
Mr. Chairman, if in fact, the, the forty-three percent, if, if I'm understanding correctly, uh, the applicant's provided forty-three percent soft landscaping and he's required to provide more, at least that's the contention. But if in fact that doesn't apply, as Sabrina has said, it's not on the, uh, it's not on the checklist of things that we're dealing with, what is the downside to approving this application as it is? And if in fact the forty-three percent doesn't apply, then the applicant can go ahead. If it does apply, he has to come back.
Well, if we defer it, he doesn't have to pay for another application, and then he's sure, he takes it up with planning or whatever, and so it's up, you know, it's up, up to him what he wants to do, but, uh, I would, I would, uh, to be on the safe side, I would think, yeah, we should defer it and he can straighten it out.
Through you, Mr. Chair, um, if you don't mind, um, would we be able to actually maybe just have a quick answer in relation to if, uh, the forty-three percent applies to this lot, or, uh, in fact, if there's maybe some sort of, um, uh, like a bylaw, uh?
We're not the planners, so we can't, we can't tell you that. We only deal with, with the variances that appear in front of us.
Understood, okay, fair enough.
So.
So yeah, I guess we could decide to defer the, the meeting if you guys are, uh, if, uh, committee is okay with that?
Yeah, I think so. Okay, panel, do we have a motion for deferral? Aaron? Okay, you make a motion?
Based on our discussion, we would like to, uh, defer the application, so the applicant will have time to speak with the neighbor and to clarify with, uh, city staff.
And Carl, you second that, all in favor of the deferral? Thank you, you have a deferral, sir. Uh, number forty-two, one Thorburn Avenue, Thorburn, Thorburn Avenue. Uh, the, uh, purpose of this application is to construct a one-story ancillary building, a detached garage in the rear yard. With this application, we have good, uh, material submitted by the applicant. We have two form letters in support from three and six Thorburn, and correspondence in opposition from one eighty, uh, Dufferin Avenue. Uh, Mr. Henriques?
Yes, my name is Tony Henriques. I'm the agent for this application. Uh, I'm at five forty-three Concord Avenue, Toronto, Ontario.
Okay, somebody's in opposition, so you better, uh, tell us what this is about.
Yes. I, I would actually like to start with the letter of opposition, because I was kind of shocked when I saw it. Uh, basically, Thorn, one Thornburn Avenue is at the core, the southwest corner of Bathurst and Thorn, uh, Burn. And, uh, one eighty Dufferin is, uh, one block north. The letter that's been sent and the pictures that were attached to this letter refer to the backyard of one Temple Avenue, which is one block north. This person has been, has confused one Thornburn with one Temple.
Ah, so your house doesn't abut his property at all?
No, it does not, and we do not affect any, uh, anybody, uh, crossing our property. We're one block south of, uh, one eighty Dufferin. So there was a big confusion here, because I, I had been to the site three times, and when I saw this, uh, picture that was sent, it just didn't make any sense. So I went back the fourth time, and then I realized that this picture is actually the backyard of one Temple Avenue.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, but dealing with your application on the merits, I want to ask, uh, about variance number one, where we have zero percent of the rear yard is soft landscaping when you need fifty percent.
Uh, we do not have zero. We, uh, I actually, uh, we, the existing is zero, the proposed is, uh, we are proposing to have three point five percent soft landscape, and basically, we're just achieving that by reducing the existing driveway. Our backyard is.
Wait that, please, I didn't hear you, sorry.
Well, we're, we're actually increasing, uh, from zero landscape to three point five percent landscape, and we're doing this by just reducing the existing driveway. Currently, there's zero soft landscape there, and, um, basically, our, our backyard is three hundred and ninety-nine square feet. So by the time we put the garage with the driveway, there's no space to add any more landscape, and I have been in contact with the planning department and they are okay with it.
What is on the eight point four nine foot space that's, if, if we can pull up your site plan, it's a little hard to read, but there's a, you access this, this proposed garage by a laneway that's on an angle, I think, and then.
Yeah.
There's a strip of land that's eight point four nine feet wide, and it's, and it's, and it's the width of the pro, what's in there?
There's basically, uh, there's a two-story frame, an existing old two-story frame, a one-story frame and a porch. So that land is all covered.
So there's buildings on it where the, oh, I. So there's buildings on it where the, oh, you can see it very faintly, okay.
Yeah. The actual backyard is 399 square feet. But we do have to incorporate a driveway as well, the driveways existing. Currently, that space is being used as a parking area. And what the owner wants to do is enclose a garage to make it look neater, and it would match the garage on the south side.
Okay. All right, so let us go to Mr. Yap, and to just tell him he appears to be mistaken. Okay, Donald Yap, please.
I heard, I was mistaken from the site plan, because I thought that there was another garage that was there, and I thought that was my house.
Can we have your name and address for the record, sir?
Yeah, my name is Donald Yap, 180 Dufferin.
Okay, so you understand that you made a mistake, and you've got the wrong property?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
No worries.
Okay, so panel, we don't have to go back to Mr. Henriques unless you have further questions. So do we have comments, a motion?
No, I just want to speak to Carl, that many people don't label the drawings, they just rely on the survey at the back. That's why they're always gray-hatched. We have to find those text.
I'm having some trouble with the landscaping. I appreciate that it's heavily constrained by existing buildings. But I'm also nervous about the fact that we're going to have people like, our standard applicants are going to come and give us long lists of decisions, and one of them's going to be that we approved almost zero landscaping here. And I, up until now, I don't think we've approved anything that was even close to zero landscaping without some kind of posture to try and improve that. I, I'm of the opinion that this garage is a bad idea because of that. And I think that it would be better to have a permeable paved parking pad rather than a garage which is just going to shield water off and spill it in different directions. I'm very concerned with the lack of permeability. So in this case, I'm not going to be able, based on what I've got now, unless my colleagues can convince me otherwise, I'm not going to be able to support this.
I wonder, Carl, maybe we can go back to the applicant. One alternative might be a green roof.
Yeah, I wondered about that as well, but I think we need to do something.
Well, maybe we can go back to the applicant and test, just see whether there's any appetite for a green roof.
Mr. Henriques?
Oh, here I go. Basically, I don't know if my clients will be able to afford a green roof, but currently, there is zero landscape. And I did discuss this with the planning department, and they are okay with the 3.5% landscape, because they do realize that if this doesn't get approved, it will remain as zero landscape.
So right now, the proposed garage area is covered by hardscape?
Yes, it's used as a parking area.
And the backyard is actually a long Dufferin?
Yes, and it actually would look a lot neater to have a garage versus seeing cars parked.
Yeah.
The garage actually goes to Dufferin, so in Dufferin, there's a lot of large buildings, and there is very little landscape along there. But it would look a lot neater than seeing cars being parked in the backyard.
So what's the design of the garage? Does it have a flat roof that makes it amenable to a green roof?
It does have a flat roof, yes. Which is similar to the garage on the south side.
So the garage on the south side, do they have any more soft landscaping than your client does?
I'm not sure what is a soft landscape there. They have more area, it's a larger backyard.
I see.
The other area that might be worth looking at, it's hard because the site plan is so faint. But you see where you've got 8.49 feet there, there's a square.
Yeah.
That's not a building, that's open space, right?
Nope, it's all, it's all covered. There is a two-story frame addition, a one-and-a-half story, and a framed porch, and that's been there for many, many years.
And they're all roofed, fully roofed?
Except the framed porch.
Does the framed porch have a roof?
But the backyard landscape doesn't count there, because it only counts behind the rear addition. So even if that was all landscape, it still wouldn't count as landscape.
So I would note that it is an existing condition. This is a unique situation, it is existing. You know, it's already concrete, it's a small backyard. I do know that they do have a strip of green along Dufferin, and they do have a full grassed front yard. So as a property, they're not doing too bad. It's just this very small posted stamped spot in the back. So, you know, given, frankly, given that it's already existing as a concrete pad, I don't think incrementally allowing this would, you know, make it any worse. And, you know, given that this is on Dufferin, which is a very busy street, and most buildings actually come right out to the sidewalk, maybe this one's a little different, Carl, than most that we would see?
How does it compare with the one we refused earlier? The one with the small backyard, and they put in a garage?
Just a question to the applicant, do you need a new curb cut on the sidewalk?
No, everything is existing. The curb is there, the driveway is there. The driveway is actually, includes the green space that I'm showing on the plans. That's proposed to reduce the driveway. The driveway is there, everything is there. So we're not, we're not reducing any landscape, we're actually increasing.
And Don, without relitigating, I think the other one was, first of all, is illegally constructed. And secondly, you know, it was a large structure in a very small backyard.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't larger than, it was actually smaller than a required garage, because the depth was shorter. So yes, everything looked big, because it was such a small yard. But I don't, I mean, I don't see that there's this, I mean, this already has, this is already, well, actually, that one had the same kind of parking pad in the back too, before they put up the garage, although they did illegally. I don't think we're supposed to take account of the fact that it was done illegally. That shouldn't affect our decision. I'm not saying we refuse this one, I think we should find a way to do it. But I'm just pointing out that it appears to me that we're being inconsistent with the previous application.
I think the issue here that's been brought forward that is quite valid is that it's visible to a major roadway, and that probably, if the garage door is closed, that what you see from the major roadway is more attractive than an open parking space. Technically, I would argue that permeable paving on a parking space is better for the environment, because it allows some water to go through. But that doesn't appear to be reasonable here. Larry's point about a green roof, I think, is reasonable. The other, the one other area that might be helpful is you've got two little green spaces, green areas on either side of the driveway. Can you put the site plan up again for a second? But you've got a proposed concrete driveway. What if that was made with interlocking pavers? What would that do to the percentage of landscaping you have?
Well, we could, we could increase that with pavers. I don't know if the, zoning doesn't include that as part of landscape.
I know, but we understand that it allows some percolation. So would that be something that would be reasonable, where you've got proposed concrete walkway that, would you be consider, or would you be agreeable to putting that in as permeable pavers?
Yes.
Okay, I think, all things considered, it's probably the best alternative that we've got before us today.
We could definitely do that.
Sorry, where are we talking, Carl?
The garage is not right at the property line. There's a proposed concrete driveway in front of it.
Right.
I'm suggesting that that be permeable pavers. At least, it allows for percolation of some liquid through the surface of the ground.
Sure, I agree. Where are you, it's a stupid question, but where are you planning to discharge your rainwater off your garage?
The rainwater would be in between the houses and to the soft landscape.
Okay, well, that's good.
Okay, do we have a motion? All right, so the green roof is not something you know whether your client's going to approve of?
I don't think he would have the money to build that. If that was our only alternative, I don't think it would get built. It would remain as it is now.
We don't want to make a condition that precludes him from doing what he wants to do with his property so long as it, you know. Okay, so let's take it into committee, and we have a motion?
Carl, you should do this one.
Yeah.
Okay, the motion would be to approve of the application, subject to the, can you put the site plan up again, sorry? The concrete, the proposed concrete driveway is to be paved with permeable pavers. And I think Larry's point was also a good one, that the rainwater from the roof is to be discharged into one of the, or into the landscaped areas on either side of the driveway. That takes it away from the other properties.
Yes, yeah, Larry, you're second?
I'm second, yeah.
All right, all in favor? Right, you have your approval, sir. Thank you. Number 43, 117 to 127 Broadview Avenue. And the purpose of this application is to alter the redevelopment plan for the 37-story building North Tower and the 34-story building South Tower on the lot. Approved under site-specific by law 974-2020 LAPAT by increasing the height, increasing the number of stories, increasing the total gross floor area, and increasing the total number of dwelling units to 1,010 units. A total of 104 short-term bicycle parking spaces will be provided on-site. Yeah, so we have material submitted by the applicant and staff report from planning. Mr. Bronskill?
Evening, Mr. Chair. Nice to start the day with you with a vet clinic, and nice to finish the day with you with this to the panel. Just for the record, sir, it's David Bronskill from Goodman's LLP, 33 Bay Street, Suite 3400, Toronto, Ontario, acting as agent on behalf of the applicant.
David, have you been here all day?
No, through you, Mr. Chair. I did spend some time in mediation today before coming back to you.
I hope it was a successful mediation.
Thank you, sir, it was.
Good. Okay, so perhaps you could just tell us what this is about? I know that you want to reduce or increase a whole bunch of stuff. Why?
I certainly, sir, I can walk through, we are, just formally, we are in receipt of the staff report from City Planning. And as noted, there is no objection from City Planning staff. I think just, most importantly for the committee, there are some important conditions there that we are fully supportive of, because it's part of the package of additional public benefits that have been secured through this process, through discussions with City Planning staff. And so I just wanted, for the record, to note that staff report, and note that we are in agreement on those conditions. Just as background for you, the project is now under construction. It's a residential building under construction, as noted in the purpose. It's approved today with heights of 37 stories and 34 stories. It was a settlement that was initially the subject of a settlement hearing in November of 2017. The reason that dates relevant just for the committee's consideration of the matter is, as you well know, there've been a significant number of changes to the land use planning policy regime for the area. Since that settlement in 2017, there's an updated secondary plan, which is Official Plan Amendment Number 405, which contemplates a height range in this area of 35 to 50 stories. There's been a new growth plan, or I should say maybe an amended growth plan, 2019, and then amended in 2020. There's been a new provincial policy statement in 2020. And there's also been, more recently, through approval by city council, and I recognize this official plan amendment is with the Minister for Approval, but they identified the Mount Pleasant Protected Major Transit Station area, and the subject site is included within the boundaries, the delineated boundary of that protected major transit station area. There's also been additional approvals in height. If staff, just if I could ask them, there is a 12-page presentation, and Mr. Chair, I didn't propose to go all through, through all of it. That chronology of events is page five of that presentation. Page eight is a height map that shows heights in the area, including some recent approvals. And that's part of what had our client with, in consultation with planning staff, contemplating the additional heights. If you just even go along Broadview coming east from North Toronto Collegiate, there's a pair of 39-story buildings there. On the north side, there's a 44-story building. It's, I was actually involved in that one, ironically, that's 44 Broadway. When you get to the corner, you see the two 38-story buildings at the southeast corner, immediately adjacent to the site. Most recently, there's a 40-story building at 241 Red Path that was a recent settlement approved at the Ontario Land Tribunal. So there has been, as a result of these changed planning instruments, in general, an increase in height. And that's why we're here today, just to seek what we think is a modest increase to the height with the support of planning staff. I just wanted to flag the public benefits for you, and I'm happy to also take some questions. It's slide seven outlines this for you, just in terms of, you can understand how all the pieces here go together. 117 Broadway there, shown in the orange on the south side, it did have existing residential rental units on it. As part of the approval for 117 Broadway, you can see the 36-story building on the east side of Red Path, so up and to the left from the site. What we did there on that site, which has been frankly, a real success, and I think a model, is it's actually a 36-story purpose-built rental building. And so the replacement units from 117 Broadway actually went into that unit. So tenants could move into that unit, into that building. We would add an additional six affordable housing units in that building. I know the slide says five, but the staff report is correct. It's another six affordable housing units are being secured through this variance project. That initial approval also secured the park there at the northeast corner of Red Path and Broadway. But if you look east of Mount Pleasant, that package of approvals also secured previously conveyed parkland at 176 Broadway. Through this variance application, that parkland would grow. 182 Broadway has been secured by our client, and as part of approval of these variances, that additional piece of parkland would be conveyed, and the parkland would be expanded. So although we are seeking the additional height and the additional density that goes along with it, I think, I hope from this slide, the committee can understand that there's also some really good public benefits that are being secured. We've tested the shadows with city staff, they meet the policies in OPA 405. I'm happy to go through more of the variances if you have any questions. But overall, we do think it's a good story. It does maintain the intended purpose of OPA 405. We also think it meets the other tests, and in particular, the desirability test to secure additional affordable housing and an expanded parkland in the area.
Yes, Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bronskill, the, it's a tribute...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Bronskill, the, I'm, it's a tribute, I guess, to your, your verbal presentation and all the submitted materials that I, I really don't have any trouble with the, the density and height changes that you're requesting. There's, there's ample support for them in the new policy documents and the new legislation. The only thing that I, and if it's there, I apologize. The only thing I didn't find is any support for variance number five. That's a really substantial reduction. Um, and the proposal was for nine hundred and nine long-term bicycle parking spaces and two hundred and two short-term and what is being provided is one hundred and one short-term bicycle parking. There, there must be some basis for those numbers.
Yes.
Could, could you tell me what they are and if I, if I missed it, I'm sorry?
No, no, you didn't miss it. Um, I'm actually, through you, Mr. Chair, I'm actually going to try and convince you that this is a technical variance. And I know that may seem odd in terms of the numbers, but there, there really is an explanation for it. So the site-specific, if, if you notice in the list of variances, the other four variances are all the chapter, um, let me just make sure I get it right, chapter nine hundred. That's because chapter nine hundred is where the site-specific bylaws live in five, six, nine, twenty thirteen. So the first four variances were actually amending the site-specific bylaw. That was the subject of the settlement in twenty seventeen. The fifth variance that you've asked me about, that's in the parent bylaw. Here's, it's, it's interesting. Here's what happened is, so when the, when the site-specific bylaw was approved, the short-term bicycle parking requirement at the time was the rate that we're seeking here.
Point one?
Yes, the point one. So we're not deviating from the nine hundred and nine long-term. It's, and, and we're in fact not actually deviating from the two oh two. The existing bylaw for the project that's under construction only requires the point one. We, because we met the point one, we didn't exempt ourselves from it in the site-specific bylaw. What's happened since then is there's been a change to the requirement to go to, in the parent bylaw from point one to point two, but because we didn't exempt ourselves from it, that new provision technically applies to the, to the proposal that we're putting before you now. So we're actually just seeking to keep the point one rate that was approved in the settlement at twenty, in twenty seventeen, that's implemented in the site-specific bylaw. So I, I hope that answers your question. That's why I think it's a technical variance. We're just keeping the rate we already had. We just have to pick it up through this process.
And you never really did have long-term. You just had, you had one hundred and one short-term.
No, they had nine hundred and nine long-term.
We're, we're meeting the, we're, we're providing long-term, we're just varying the short-term.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So, so the nine hundred and nine stays?
Yes.
Okay, um, the way it's worded is compli- okay, that, that's very helpful. Thank you, David.
No, no, not at all. I, we antit- not surprisingly, we anticipated that question. Um, and we had a very lengthy discussion to make sure that I could get that chronology right for you.
All right, so Mr. Bronskill, we had a, uh, training presentation on, uh, long-term and short-term bicycle, uh, parking spaces and I, uh, ob- objected to the, uh, new bylaw, short-term point two for apartment because we had an application for eighteen hundred and fifteen units and that came out to something like three hundred and sixty-five short-term bicycle spots and I thought that that was ridiculous, but the staff assured me that it was in line with what the parking, visitor parking for cars was previously. So, but I, I'm glad to see that you're able to keep, or, or at least I think we can help you with the one oh one. Larry, do you have a question?
Can I, can I ask one further question? Would it make sense? Uh, so that this doesn't create confusion in the future, that instead of in this case, one hundred and one short-term bicycle parking spaces will be provided, should we clarify that in this case as well, nine hundred and nine long-term bicycle parking spaces are going to be provided? And then anybody looking at this can understand what's that, that the nine hundred, because the way it's written, it sounds as though the nine hundred and nine may not be provided too. It seems to me that we might be able to reword the variance in a way that's clearer.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, no, I, I was going to agree with you to do that.
Okay.
Um, you know, provided that, uh, David is okay with that, that it would just, variance number five would read, in this case, nine hundred and nine long-term bicycle parking spaces and one hundred and one short-term bicycle parking spaces will be provided on site.
Yeah, that's a good catch.
Sir, David, are you okay with that?
Yeah, it, it's sorry to interrupt. Yeah, I, I understand that and I don't think there's any issue with that. I think it's, it's ensuring that you're right, somebody six months from now doesn't pick up this decision and try and argue that the way it's phrased means you only have to provide one hundred and one short-term bicycle parking spaces and zero long-term bicycle parking spaces, which, which is not the intent of the application.
So Larry, did you have a question?
Yeah, thanks, Jared. So, um, thank you, David. That was a very good presentation on a very complicated project. Um, this is an MTSA, so it is the area where we should be directing more density and more intensification. So I have no problem uh, with this application, particularly given, as you mentioned, the, 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 the robust, uh, negotiations around community benefits, which look really good. Uh, I was interested more out of curiosity, but the additional floors and additional units. Did you mention anywhere where the, what the unit mix is going to be like for those additional units?
I had not. Um, it mirrors the mix in the previous approval and I'm just seeing if I have that in front of me in terms of the exact mix, but it mirrors the same mix as was previously approved. Um, and I apologize through you, Mr. Chair, I don't have that mix
Yeah.
at my fingertips.
Yeah, it's not Jermaine. It's more, as you know, I mean, we're all interested in having a, a good range of units, uh, in these kinds of facilities and obviously more leaning towards twos and threes rather than ones. Uh, but if, if, if that's what has been agreed at LPAT, then I presume, you know, people's interest in having that good mix have been met.
Yes, it, we, we did go through that. I was just seeing if I could call it up very quickly. Actually, if you with, I know it's laid with the committee's indulgence. If you give me one moment, I think I found exactly where to get it. What we've done in the underlying approval and it's actually consistent, it's in the bylaw and it's consistent. I'm just pulling up the site-specific bylaw, sir. It's, it's, um, it's not only a good mix, it's actually consistent with the direction of the secondary plan. So we pick up ten percent threes and twenty percent twos to get up to thirty percent that are threes and twos. Um, that's what was in the, the site-specific bylaw at the time. So we are getting some uh, larger units and remaining consistent with that previous approval.
So David, do you have any car parking?
There is, yes, there is still vehicular parking. We have not eliminated, we're not quite that bold yet to, to eliminate the vehicular parking.
So what, how many parking spaces do you have?
Um, I don't know the exact number. I can tell you that the parking will be provided in the same ratios, uh, and we've got a minimum of two hundred and twenty parking spaces for residents. We've got a minimum of thirty-two for visitor and non-res.
Okay.
Uh, Chair, I think, uh, I think we, this is fairly straightforward, given, uh, the good explanation, uh, for it. So why don't, uh, I'm happy to move a motion to, uh, approve this application. I think it uh, is well-founded. I think it is, uh, obviously acceptable to the city staff. I think it's an appropriate, uh, development for this area. Um, uh, so I'll make a conditional, the planning conditions and the amended, uh, variance number five as Sabrina uh, read out.
Okay, second that, Carl. All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, the panel. And Mr. Chair, there, I didn't want to do this early at the risk of gilding the lily. The, the matter I had for this morning was the vet clinic was a personal matter. It's, I've never realized how hard it is when you're doing it for yourself. Um, and staff were a huge help. Um, I didn't want to say that at, at risk of, um, biasing any consideration of the matters we had today, but that, that vet clinic today was, uh, actually a personal matter and I greatly appreciate the effort staff put in. I know they do it on every application, but it was wonderful in my personal capacity to have that assistance. So I wanted to add that at the end of the day, once you'd considered the matters on the merits.
Thank you. Okay, we are now adjourned at, uh, eleven minutes to seven.
Thank you, Sabrina. And who, Sabrina, who was it that was, uh, trying to get people on the phone?
So we have John.